Welcome all. Good evening. We are at the work session for the Village of Pleasantville Board of Trustees. Today is Monday, July 22. We have a work session for an hour at seven, followed by our regular meeting at eight. There are four of us participating in the meeting. Myself, Nicole and Paul are here in the room. Amy is at home, as you can see on video, participating in the meeting for medical reasons. David Vingemore is away today, so we have a quorum. More than quorum, because we have four of the five of us. Alright, so first item on our agenda is
Recording in progress.
A brief discussion with Anthony Carr, our superintendent of Public Works and Village Engineer, regarding the pool reconstruction. Can you hear us, Anthony?
Mayor, I absolutely can. How are you?
Fine, and we absolutely can hear you too.
Hi, Anthony.
This is the second call we've had with Anthony today on a day that he theoretically is off. So being off turns out not to be such a good deal. Alright, thank you, sir.
It's all good.
You want to give us a brief
Alright, I'll keep it brief, Mr. Mayor and Board. Yes, yes, I will give you a quick timeline, I assume. Circulate the Capitol Project update to the Mayor and Board prior to the meeting.
Yes, you did. He did, and I will share my screen.
I'm sorry.
We can hear you. You can't hear us?
Excellent, okay.
Alright, I'm gonna share my screen.
I could hear you, a little spotty, but I, yes.
Alright, I'm gonna share the Capitol Project update, so it's on the screen.
Alright, and I will paraphrase from each bullet item for each project. So, as far as the Village Pool Reconstruction, project was advertised on July 2nd. We received bids back on July 16th, so it was a 14 calendar day bid period. Since then, we have issued a bid tabulation, which is just a compilation of the different bidders and their bids. We did have a meeting, pre-award meeting. When I say "we," that's Department of Public Works and the two project consultants, Steve Remkounis of Remkounis Engineering and Robert DeBruin of DeBruin Engineering. We had a pre-award meeting on Friday, July 19th, I believe. And the meeting was very productive. It was very beneficial for all parties. It allowed the village and its consultants to ask additional questions. Basically, the agenda was introductions, understanding the project's scope, a little bit about the process, as far as what happens next. More so procedurally with the Board of Trustees if the project is awarded, which I know will be discussed tonight. And then a little bit of a timeline after that. And then we spoke about the project team, or I should say the lowest apparent bidders' project teams qualifications. So we requested additional information, which is very typical for a project of this size, of this scope. It's a big decision. Even though it's a small footprint, there's a lot of capital investment going into that smaller square footage typically, from, let's say, a 50-lot subdivision. However, the answer is the same, right? The staff, we will provide additional knowledge and expertise to Village Administrator and the Board to help guide you through that process, but not to digress. The pre-award meeting went very well. We found out additional information about Howard and Company, which are right now deemed the lowest apparent bidder. What does that mean? The lowest apparent bidder is a term that's used when the bids are submitted and there is a lowest bidder. Before they're deemed their lowest responsible bidder, you have what's called the bid evaluation process, which we're almost ending now at this point, at least procedurally, with the Department of Public Works and its consultants. So, before the lowest apparent, lowest responsible bidder is deemed responsible, we go through this process. We did ask for additional qualifications related to their pool subcontractors, since this is a pool job and this is the largest scoped portion of the project. So we want to ensure that their pool subcontractor has had a good experience. What do I mean by that? I mean by similarly sized pools, as far as square footage. The currently proposed pool is 13,000 square feet, 11,000 for the main pool, it's about 2,000 square feet for the waiting pool. So we just want to ensure that the pool subcontractor has comparable experience, which is well within the village's right and very typical of a project this size at this cost. Earlier this afternoon, Howard and Company, the lowest apparent bidder, did submit the supplemental information. However, it was about maybe two or three hours ago, and myself and the project team have not gone through it yet. But I will tell you, from a cursory standpoint, they did provide additional data as far as the prior projects that the pool subcontractor worked on from a square footage basis. So that was one of the ask. In addition to what they had submitted with their bids, we wanted them to quantify square footage, very important. And also hydraulics, meaning the size of the pipes into the ground, right? So we want to make sure that we're on a level playing field and it's apples to apples. Again, we have not gone through that information in detail. I will defer to Robert DeBruin, Stephen Kounis. However, from my quick glance, a lot of the projects were close to the proposed square footage of the pool reconstruction project. Also, Howard and Company is unique in the sense, as the lowest apparent bidder. They're unique in the sense that they provide construction management services, much like a Turner Construction or Whiting Turner. They're bigger outfits, but generally the same principles apply. They also provide owner's representative services, so they would represent people like us, or municipality like us, and they also present, provide, excuse me, general contracting services, which is what the bulk of all the other bidders provide. I can't speak to all of them. Not gonna put a number on it, but I know most of the other bidders are general contractors who have subcontractors that they will be managing. In this case, Howard and Company, they provide all those turnkey services. Why is this relevant? How does this help us? It definitely lends itself to an extra degree of comfort with having Howard having construction management experience and owner's rep experience. They've been on our side before, so they understand and they're more likely, I would say, and experienced and knowledgeable of the construction principles, and also will hold their subcontractors accountable. So, you know, they're used to doing that, which I thought was impressive. So it's almost having a GC, an owner's rep, and a construction manager all rolled into one entity, which does not hurt the village's ability to have the subcontractors manage to get the project done on schedule.
Anthony, what was the second thing you said?
As of today? Yes.
Sorry, you said they have construction management services, general contracting services, and what was the thing in between? Something management services?
Oh, owner's representative services. So basically, it's as is. They'll represent an owner on various stages of construction, not necessarily during all phases, but maybe during the design-build, maybe during a planning phase, but they have been in the position where they've represented other entities as the owner.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. So Mayor and Board, basically where we stand today is, although not a final decision has been made, obviously, to pursue the project, which is more within your purview, but as far as the recommendation of award, we're not completely finished with the bid evaluation process, but barring any unforeseen additional information that we receive, and/or not maintaining the course of the already completed portions of the bid evaluation process, the village at this point, at least Public Works and its consultants, are comfortable moving in the direction of recommending award to this lowest apparent bidder, who is deemed the lowest responsible bidder. Again, the bid evaluation is not completed, but would all things being equal, and no derogatory information received or anything discovered in the next few days that would be negative against Howard and Company, we don't foresee any issue with recommending award potentially in the future.
Okay. Alright, thank you for that, Anthony. We obviously on our side of the table have to discuss the costs of this and whether to go ahead, but to protect your time, you want to just jump through these other capital items and then we'll release you from
That's all good. Absolutely. And so, okay, so that was item number one, Manville Corridor Improvement Project. Eric, I know you could fill in some of the gaps on this, but in general, the project is progressing. I know it looks a little bit like it's not from maybe the outsider's view. However, there has been a lot of backend work that's been done. Okay, so why aren't they out there now is probably the bigger question. There is additional survey work that needs to be completed, specifically in the Memorial Plaza and Manville Road area. Why is this important, the survey work? Because we want to ensure that the wall, the future concrete retaining wall is gonna wrap around Memorial Plaza and Manville Road that is constructed at the scene in the right spot. And what I mean by that is due to the limited space and the site constraints, the wall has to be built almost where it's proposed with very little tolerance of deviation from the plans because of ADA compliance. So anything six inches to the left, to the right, could put the village in a situation where we're building a new facility that's not ADA compliant, and I can tell you the New York State DOT will not look favorably on that, neither will the US Department of Justice, which oversees ADA regulations. So, with that being said, the survey is scheduled, I believe, to come out, the surveyor, I should say, is scheduled to come out mid-week this week. Wednesday, Thursday timeframe, they probably only have a day of work. Followed by that, the structural engineers are reviewing some additional rebar drawings for the same retaining wall that I mentioned earlier, which actually were just approved earlier tonight. So those are being sent back to the rebar subcontractor, because whenever you build a big concrete structure, there's actually a specific plan for rebar as far as how it's spaced and how it's tied together, so that the wall is structurally sound. So a lot of little details, but that's where I'll stop. So those are the two big items. And Eric, I know some discussions with Insight and Giampia is pushing very hard, and if there's anybody that's pushing as hard to get this project completed in the village, besides the contractor, it's definitely the village administrator. So I know this keeps up at night, but I think that based on the recent discussion with Insight, it does, you know, and I tell them all the time, and Eric, you know, to be candid, there's no lack of trying on the village's end to see this through. This has been a very complicated project for factors that we, you know, we don't need to get into necessarily on this work session, but, you know, we're closer to the end than the beginning, and I would be hard pressed and shocked if this project goes to the next season, which Mayor and Board, I know that you would do not want, and Eric, I know I'm speaking for him as well, that that would be not something that's probable or even tolerated. So, Eric has put a significant amount of effort into keeping this project moving, and we hope to have Giampia back. I mean, Eric, if everything all goes well and they want to come back and finish the remainder of the work, and what's that, right? That sidewalk and curb over the MTA Bridge, that sidewalk curb and the right turn lane on Memorial Plaza, and then final paving and striping, and then obviously the retaining wall that we spoke about earlier. I mean, that's a few drainage structures that may or may not be within their scope, depending how other things shake out. So we're closer to the end, and I do believe that this month, hopefully, if not early August, Giampia would be back and remobilized, and their deal is, once they come back, they want to finish everything. They don't want to demobilize again, because this is taking effort and time away from the good work that could be done if they just come in and finish. Eric, did I omit or misrepresented anything?
No, I think, yeah, all good.
So we're hoping early August.
Yeah, I mean, I think it really depends on Giampia's construction schedule, because they are now, they're the sub to PCI and are working to get it done. So it's fitting it into their schedule.
Okay.
Alright. Quick notes on civic space, Anthony?
Right, and this is unique in the sense that we have a subcontractor performing. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You're breaking up a little, but it's okay.
Hello?
We hear you.
Sorry, I'm sorry. But yes, okay, okay. Now we're moving on to Memorial Plaza Civic Space, yes. So Memorial Plaza Civic Space, the contractors anticipated to mobilize August 15th, which is a Thursday, to begin site prep. Basically, bring in a small trailer, set up site security fencing, maybe do some survey and stakeout with the actual construction or land disturbance scheduled to start the following week. We know that that portion of the project, or that project, I should say, is dependent on Memorial, on the Manville Road project's completion of that retaining wall, and also the right turn lane. Because it's not until the right turn lane, dedicated right turn lane, that will result from the Manville Road project. It's not until that right turn lane is installed that the village can or will close the slip lane. If the slip lane is not closed, the contractor can't work. So unfortunately, the Memorial Plaza Civic Space project is a little bit somewhat beholden on the completion status of the Manville Road project. The Manville Road project does not need to be completed in its entirety. We just need to construct the wall, the curb, the sidewalk, and that right turn lane adjacent to the Memorial Plaza Civic Site. Once those site features are in, it really doesn't matter. It does, but it doesn't matter for purposes of the Civic Space project. It doesn't hold the Civic Space project up. So we have a project call to meeting tomorrow, with that calling this week, as far as the schedule for the project.
You're breaking up now, Anthony.
We may potentially postpone their mobilization. I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yeah, you're breaking up, but now you're better again.
Okay. The Memorial Plaza Civic Space, we're anticipating mobilization August 15th. However, that may change to maybe later August or after Labor Day, depending on what happens with the Manville Road project.
Okay.
Okay.
So more to follow there. The, okay, let me, I don't want to repeat all the bullets, because I know you've probably read it or can read it now. Clark Street Drainage Improvements, that project went alpha bid on June 25th of this year, bid to do back August 6th. And then we're anticipating construction to begin after Labor Day and be completed by mid-November. Reason why we timed it that way, and the question was asked by the public, well, why not do this during the summer? We would have loved to do it during the summer, but a significant portion of the work occurs in Soldiers and Sailors Park itself, with an underdrain system and some other drainage improvements. And unfortunately, in consultation with the Superintendent of Parks and Rec and the programming we have going on, we really can't utilize that field until on or around November 1st. So, after Labor Day allows the contractor to mobilize, start with the Bedford Road portion of the drainage first, which is the most downstream portion, work their way up Clark Street, turn into the parking lot, and then by the time they hit the field, it should be close to November 1st. Obviously, this is whether permitting material fabrication or the other stuff that, you know, is built into the project. So we're hoping before Thanksgiving that that project will be full completion, the site will be restored, seeded, mulched, and complete with a better drainage system, with no future flooding.
Great, thank you.
Alright, Pleasant Village Estates sidewalk and guy rail improvements, curb and guy rail improvements. So, the only, I'd say, not obstruction, but unfortunately, where we are beholden to the New York State DOT, since this is in the New York State DOT right away, the thousand linear feet of sidewalk that'll be constructed from Pierce Drive all the way to Springfield Estates entrance. Again, this is only a guy rail, curb, and sidewalk project, and some pavement replacement, and a small retaining wall in front of 23 and 25 Bedford Road. That was part of the deal from the get-go. However, the consultant and even myself are continuing to follow up with the New York State DOT on the status of the revised submission, which should have addressed, or we believe addressed, all of the New York State DOT's latest round of comments. So barring no future comments from the DOT, we should have the highway work permit, and then we could place the project alpha bid. I don't believe that we're in a position at this point where we need to delay this project until spring of 2025, as long as we get that permit in the next month-ish, maybe even 45 days. Realistically, we're allocating six weeks worth of work with weather, but to be honest with you, a contractor who mobilizes could likely finish this project in three to four weeks. So six weeks is a very aggressive and very conservative. So even if we start by October 1st, even early October, we could likely still complete the project before the end of the construction season, which is typically mid-December when asphalt plants close. I like to say Thanksgiving, because again, that's a big conservative and the colder weather can come in quicker. So we still have time and some breathing room to get the project done this season.
Great, thank you.
Alright, Cooley Street Improvements. So the Manville or the Cooley Street improvements are really what's tied to
Breaking up again a little.
Is, there's a number of improvements in the Manville Road part adjacent to the site, and that was water main improvement. I'm trying to move around. I apologize. Let me know.
Yeah, that's good.
Alright, I'm gonna try to stay to a better spot. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Alright, perfect, perfect. Okay. Cooley Street, Manville Road, that portion of work is almost complete. The water main improvements have been installed, completed, tested. Everything good to go there. Currently, the developer and the contractor, Casal, are working on installing drainage improvements, basically putting a new drainage manhole, probably, if I had to say, close to the center line of Manville Road, and then from that drainage manhole, they're gonna install a concrete pipe that's gonna connect to a catch basin on Cooley Street in the village right away. So once that connection is done, that trench can be backfilled, restored, and then the developer and his contractor can complete final paving of Cooley Street, which is basically from the middle of the block by the entrance to Key Food, where the new fire hydrant is, kind of basically mid-block of Cooley Street down to the entrance of, by Manville Road, the concrete curb and sidewalk and driveway could then be completed as well. And honestly, they really only have probably five to seven calendar days of work if they work straight through. So conservatively, we anticipate this project to be done on or before mid-August, and that's with, you know, that's what I mean, with the unexpected delay and unforeseen condition and uncooperating weather. So by the middle of August, Manville Road should be repaved in that portion adjacent to Cooley Street. Final top course will be installed at Cooley Street, curb and sidewalk and the dry open will be completed. And then once the asphalt's done, DPW will come in and stripe out all the parking spaces from the Manville section all the way up to Bedford Road. So that, what delayed that project a bit was the New York State DOT did not release a drainage manhole that I was talking about, that's gonna go on top of their existing storm sewer out in their road. They didn't release that shop drawing, so the developer and the contractor couldn't send that to the fabricator to get it into production, which takes about three to four weeks of time. But however, they received the manhole, so that should be completed within the next one to three days, the drainage work.
Alright.
Alright. Yes, yes, I know this has been a hot topic, so DPW was pleased to report that Verdi Electric, who basically maintains our and everybody else's, every other municipality's traffic signals for emergency and blue sky operation, they will be mobilizing to the site, to the area, I should say, August 1st, and be completed with the upgrades by August 22nd, I believe, is what I stated. Yes, that's a Thursday, so Thursday, again, that's a big conservative, that's the schedule they gave us, and what they'll be doing there is installing a 360-degree panoramic camera at the Bedford and Wheeler, Bedford and Marble, and Bedford and Pleasantville intersections. And why is that important? Because the cameras we currently have now either don't exist, or they've been flooded and have not been operating. So the cameras have not been functional. And again, why is that important? Those cameras, in conjunction with the traffic loops that you see cutting to the pavement, those are the thin rectangular squares as you approach the intersection, specifically in front of Taco Project, on Memorial Plaza going to Marble Avenue, you could see a big loop. But in either case, some intersections use just cameras, others use just loops, others use a combination of both. In our case, we were using a combination of both and some, and only using loops and others. So long story short, the video detection system will better detect vehicles and will see the presence of the vehicles, even if the loop fails, or if there's no loop now. And that will send the signals to the traffic controller, which is like the brain, which will be reprogrammed as part of these improvements. Our consultant came up with new plans that basically gives a certain amount of time to red, yellow, green, allows adequate flow, but balancing that with pedestrian safety, which, again, we're also gonna be installing LPIs at each intersection. Those are leading pedestrian intervals. So it basically gives an amount of time allocated for pedestrians to start crossing into the crosswalk, but it doesn't necessarily give them a dedicated phase that would congest traffic within the Bedford Road corridor. So the LPIs are now recommended by the New York State, actually required on a lot of projects, are now required by the New York State DOT on any traffic signal improvement project. So LPIs are great, they're a good balance pedestrian safety and vehicular flow. So we're reprogramming the controllers, and we're putting three new cameras. And I hope, and I'm very confident, based on our consultant who did an amazing job with the field investigation, and Verdi too, who's looked at this, we believe that your traffic congestion, which I've been in on Wheeler Avenue, because you can only get about two cars through if you time it right on certain times of the day, off a Wheeler, that will be alleviated and likely eliminated.
That will be a consummation devoutly to be wished.
Yes, that's a big one, and like I said, the congestion will be, I want to say eliminated, but we'll see how things, I'm a little apprehensive to say that, because a lot of times with these timing plans, you have to make small little adjustments after you implement these plans, because the model tells you one thing, and then there's the empirical or the field data, which sometimes tells you a little bit of a different story. So we will square that away, but we're very happy and excited, because I know this is one of the first projects that DPW was asked to work on when I joined the village. So happy that we're arriving at the end.
And we'll have modern, much more capable detection equipment than we've ever had before, which will help us in the future keep this work in proper.
Absolutely. Maintenance won't even be required for maybe five to 10 years, and then you'll have a timing plan which will be stored in the cabinets, because right now, when you open the cabinets up and you look at the timing plans of the current signals, they don't match what's happening out in the field, because they were adjusted, revised, changed, for whatever reason. So now you'll have a consistent plan and for everybody, our successors to come. So that'll be a great, 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 great improvement. Nannie Hagen Brook retaining wall improvements. So last we left off, and the consultant and I had spoken this week, or last week, excuse me, last we left off with the board, and I know we were also considering the results of the pool, and I know that hasn't been determined yet as far as go and no-go with the project. But the Nannie Hagen Brook wall, I know the consultant is waiting on us to give them direction as far as if we're going to just include segment 1A, which was that segment if you're looking at PCTV site from Lake Street, it's that first 160 feet plus or minus to the left of the driveway. I know we were talking about potentially including a smaller 50-foot segment. Well, let's just call it 1B. I might have the letters mixed up, but there's a 1A and 1B along the front. So again, the left part, which is the really severely deteriorated part, closest to the road, would be done first. Then there's 1B, which is to the right of the driveway, which is a little further from the road. It's some separation between the curb, the sidewalk, et cetera, et cetera. So Mayor and Board, I just wanted to report back to the wooden current, or at least give them a direction if they should continue on with their design with just one phase of the, that's the segment 1A, that's the first 160 feet, or if we should include the second phase of construction, which is another 50 feet or so. I know the question might be, well, how much more is it gonna cost? Truthfully, I think they estimated the first phase of the project, what was between $1 and $1.5 million, and that second segment, the smaller segment, was, I think, between $500,000 and $750,000. So you're probably looking at a $2 to $2.5 million scope if you include both phases. There is a benefit in that the contractor would only be mobilizing once. The permitting effort would only be done once for the same segment. Or the board may elect and say, you know what, we'll worry about that second segment later, let's just focus on the first segment and get that done. So I just wanted to have a quick discussion with you, Eric, and Mayor and Board, as to what your feelings are about including that second smaller segment.
And obviously, absent the money, it makes all the sense in the world to do it all at once. But we're racking up bills left, right, and backwards here. What's your take on it, Eric?
I mean, I would be apprehensive to commit for that additional cost at this point if the pool is moving forward. But, you know, we can circle back on that discussion in another work session.
Sure, I could, Eric, I could read forward Wooden Encourage's technical memorandum, maybe ask them to to sharpen and give maybe more than a conceptual number, which has a lot of contingency in it, and it maybe give, you know, a little bit more of a representative number with less contingency in it for phases 1A and 1B. And then by that point, maybe we could circle back. We'll have an idea of where we're going with the pool, and then we could see if the two marry up, and we know we're doing 1A. We know we'll do that one segment, but we can circle back to see if we want to do both.
And also recap a recap of what grants we might possibly be looking at.
Sounds good. Alright, water tanks.
Yes.
The robots have been in and out.
Yes, the robots have been deployed. I do not have, I should say, excuse me, we do not have the results of the robotic inspection. But if there was an issue, we would have known already. It's kind of like when you go to the doctor, no news is good news. But the inspection was completed on June 25th, waiting for the final report. The inspection was completed by a firm called TIC. They dropped the robot in, looked around with the light, and they saw if there's any cracking, maybe the causes for the seepage, which at this point is kind of moot. I know one tank is leaking a little bit, which is why the New York, excuse me, Westchester County Department of Health is very interested on this. Every year, they complete what's called a sanitary survey, which is an inspection of our water distribution system, and they are locked on, which is why the Westchester County DOH has also requested a copy of said report, and the village agreed to give this to them many months ago, because this was part of an arrangement that the WCDH would not press matters. that the WCDH would not press matters, uh if they felt that the tanks were not structurally compromised. They're not so much worried about the seepage um from a, from a unused water volume standpoint. It's more about having assurance that the tanks are structurally sound. Um I don't believe that the reports are going to come back that they're not structurally sound. Um again, but we'll get away for that final report. Once we get that, I'll circulate it to Eric. He could share with you and the Mayor and the Board. And I will make sure it gets in the DOH's hands because that's part A of 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 the of the puzzle. Part B is over the next few months, uh the New York State, excuse me, Westchester County DOH uh will be requiring us, although they didn't put a deadline on it because we gave them a timeline and and right now they've been amenable to that. Uh we will be required to issue a request for proposals uh for the replacement of both one million gallon, one, two, one million gallon tanks. Um we anticipate that RFP will be completed and issued uh towards the fall of twenty twenty-four. But as I noted in the project update, uh that will depend on a variety of other capital project cash flow that at this time, I need to discuss with the Village Administrator. It may not be fall twenty twenty-four, maybe it's early winter um or late winter of twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, but I digress and defer uh to Eric on that.
Yeah, well, what we'll do.
Go ahead.
Just gonna say, uh as we get clarity on how we performed in the fiscal year that just ended, we'll see what our fund balance is and figure out what we'll pay in cash towards the design or what we may want to.
We've also been seeking some grant support uh uh to be determined whether we achieve that.
Correct. Right, right. So then I know there's a few pieces of the puzzle, but to give the holistic view again, you know, we're we're anticipating about a six million dollar, give or take, high-level conceptual budgetary figure, about six million dollars to replace both tanks. Um and the tanks would not be replaced with pre-stressed concrete. They'd highly likely be a ceramic coated steel. Um those, that type of material is ideal for smaller tanks. When you get to the larger tanks like White Plains, uh four million gallons, five million gallon tanks, you typically go with pre-stressed concrete. But I will say the ceramic coated steel, they are constructed very quickly. Uh they're very reliable and they're great for smaller uh water supplies and water storage, i.e. one million gallons each falls into that category of small. Uh that will save the Village a lot of money. Um again, six million is probably a bit aggressive. Um but it's it's generally for two million gallons, you know, the rule of them is about a dollar to a dollar fifty a gallon of storage i- is typically a construction cost that's used for by engineers. So you know, two million gallons, you do that, you know, do the math times one or times one point five. You get about three million gallons. And then typically for the site work, you double the tank cost. So if the tank's a three million, you could, you could anticipate the site work may be upwards of three million. And that includes all new piping between the tanks, our water distribution system. You you will never have to worry about these tanks or the piping between valves. It'll be good for seventy-five, seventy-five plus years, the whole site, so.
Well, that's enough for me.
Alright, yes.
Roadway.
Yes, roadway. Our annual roadway ma- pavement management program. Uh we're happy to announce that the same contractor who who works in many municipalities throughout Westchester County and also on state highways, uh most recently I six eighty-four, and also performed our last paving, last year's paving, ELQ Industries, Inc., uh will be returning uh August nineteenth, starting with Brentwood Drive, and they will be leaving uh August twenty-seventh from Memorial Plaza. Uh so they're only going to be in from the ninth to the twenty-seventh, that's eight, eight working days. And that's not including weekends, by the way. So it's actually less than eight working days, uh eight calendar days, I should say. Um they are going to work in that order that I had listed, uh Brentwood, Brookside, Cedar, Dogwood, Hillcrest, Onadonk, and then they'll mobilize to Memorial Plaza. Uh typically in paving, contractors love when we do this, and it just makes sense from a practical standpoint. If you could, you tend to group your roads together, you know, and then some may not seem, some may be in better condition than others. But you don't want to send contractors to all different spots because it takes a lot of time and money to move the the milling and the paving equipment. And uh so they always compliment us and other municipalities when we can keep the uh the roads together. Um but the work will start with replacement of drainage and sanitary sewer manhole castings. So that's the covers you see in the street, but then picture us digging around twelve inches around them to the side and to the to to the uh down below the pavement. And basically, we're taking out the whole frame and the castings because it's just, one, it's the right thing to do now while you're paving the road. And two, I know that the Village historically has had problems, and Mike Ferguson and and company had to, had to build special contraptions to pop the manhole covers out, especially on the sanitary sewer manhole. So it's dangerous, not the way it's meant to be. So we've been fixing that, including what last year's paving program, we replaced, I think, thirty castings between catch basins, which are the grates and the frames they sit on, and then the manhole covers drainage or sanitary and the frame they sit on. So that happens first. They 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 replace all the metal, they patch around it, and then they come in and mill. And they come in and pave. So everything's going to be basically done in sequence, um probably from the nineteenth, probably till the twenty-fourth, they'll be done um in the uh Brentwood, Brentwood Drive area. So that's a good, a good project. And they will also, residents will also be receiving all new uh asphalt curbs. A lot of them are destroyed, they're they're broken. Um we're going to keep them the same height, so we don't keep drainage from um from flowing out of people's properties and causing, you know, causing flooding on their property that didn't exist before. And then any driveways that are damaged during the construction from the milling machine, uh we have an item in there uh to resurface a portion of the driveway, which always happens. It it's almost unavoidable. Um so that, that's that. And then Memorial Plaza with that work is, uh we we are going to install two new five-foot wide sidewalks uh that basically go across the new Northern Island that was constructed last year by Peter Landy. Uh one sidewalk will be by the EV charging stations. So if you look, there's already a drop curb and ramp there now uh with a red tactile dome for the ADA um uh compliance. We're going to connect that ramp uh to the other side. And then along the far side, uh closest to the gazebo, but before where the island bulbs out, you know, where it comes out for to each side to accommodate parking, right there, we're going to line up another sidewalk with the same drop curb and ramp uh facing the post office. So if you, if you walk by the post office in in near future and you notice there's a ramp in front of it, if you drew a straight line from the middle of that ramp and shot it across the street, that sidewalk is going to line up over there. Um the the curbing will not drop or be lowered on the side on the Starbucks side of Memorial Plaza side, because technically, these are not, it's not an ADA compliant drop curb and ramp. So really, we're just putting in, we're putting in ADA sidewalks from from a width standpoint and a slope standpoint. But the but the drop curb is not going to be compliant because we're not typically, we're not technically encouraging pedestrians to walk in between the two angle, uh between the angled parking on the other side, right? So it's more of a path. But if they need to use it, but we're not installing the drop curb and ramp there because you wouldn't have the ADA compliance in between the two parking spaces and you'd be putting pedestrians into harm's way. So, um and then the other more important modification will be along some of the curb lines, uh particularly when you exit the train station side and you make a right onto Memorial Plaza, we're going to make that that curb uh kind of a wider sweep or a wider radius. And then we're going to do the same thing on the other side. Um so if you make that right, right, and you and you turn right onto Memorial Plaza, if you made that first right back into the future civic space, we're likely going to modify the curb there to to make that a little, a little bit wider. So the curbs on the inside don't need to be widened because as long as that train station side or that roadway stays a one-way, you wouldn't ever be turning right into it. You you would only be making lefts. So that, 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 that's why that curb line doesn't, doesn't need to change as well. Uh so we're, we're very hopeful and also very uh much looking forward to all the good work. And then DPW will come back. Um also, I wanted to just note about the paving, like we do for all capital projects. Uh we also, we provide project notification letters to each resident. So I'll draft a letter up for Eric's review. We'll attach a map of basically of the improvements or, you know, where they're going to pave or whatever they're doing. And it'll be a double-sided letter that we'll tape to the door because we can't by federal mandate go into people's mailboxes. That's a no-no. So we'll take them to the door if they're not home. If they are home, we'll have a brief discussion with them. But that'll be done at least a week before the paving. Uh same thing for Clark Street. Maybe that'll even be a little bit more in advance. And we'll also start putting out uh no parking signs on drums that are pushed to the side, just so the residents in the affected areas see and 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 start warming up to the fact that there's going to be disruption in uh within the area.
Alright, thank you, sir.
You're very welcome, Mayor and Board. I'm sorry, I know this is a lot to cover. Um that's why we we worked to get you the uh executive summary in advance. Um are there any other questions specifically about contract values, um paving three twenty-five, three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars? Clark Street engineer's estimate between five fifty and six fifty. Again, you know, there there's, there's, there's a wide range there. Um the Verdi contract is about a hundred thousand dollars, just a little bit shy of that. We talked about the water storage tanks. Um Nannahagen Brook, we spoke about those numbers, although I'll provide more refined numbers for the next discussion. And um the bids came back, as you know, for the lowest apparent bidder for the pool. Believe it was five point nine and change um for the act, for their, for their base bid work, but then there was a two hundred thousand dollar allowance built into the base bid that we set uh to de-water the site. So when they're digging and working for them to pump the water out of the hole and for them to work properly, uh we put a two hundred thousand dollar allowance into it. So that's, that's how you get the the six point zero three three number. And again, that's just a base bid. That doesn't include their alternate item, which I believe was about nine hundred thousand dollars uh for the flood mitigation for the culvert.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Alright, Mayor, Board.
It looks like we're keeping you busy.
Yeah, uh more than you know, but but I'm I'm happy to do it. And I'm I'm glad that I I joined the Village when all, when all this was going on. Because honestly, you know, sleepy village, sleepy municipality, it it it's good to a point sometimes, we need a break, but there's so many cool things happening. And and I'm glad that myself and Eric and DPW get to be part of it. So thank you for the support. And Eric, thank you for the support as well.
Like you, likewise to you, Anthony. Much appreciated. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Board. Thank you, Eric. Have a good night. Take care.
Alright, so um and we just heard the, the uh the low bid in the rebid for the pool was six point oh three three million, essentially. Six million bucks. We currently have a bond authorization for five million dollars. And at one point in time, never imagined this project could come anywhere near that number. That six million uh uh represents the base pool project. It does not include the additional flood mitigation that we had proposed. That's another almost a million dollars in the case of this um uh bidder, the the current apparent low bidder. I think the sense of everyone so far is that we would forego that if we're going to go ahead with this. And we've had extended conversations with Anthony and with uh Bob DeBruin, who's the uh site engineer and the person who's uh done all the analysis for us about the flooding situation. And certainly, uh none of those people believe it would be irresponsible to go ahead without that. Uh it will certainly not protect us against some problems in the way it would have if we did it. But the big win of the project, if we do it, is that the uh pool mechanicals, the electrical uh base uh that runs everything will be above ground instead of below grade as it is now, which is the biggest problem we confront and the source of the biggest expense. So um the
So the, I just have a question. So the the lowest bidder from the first round, which obviously didn't pass because of the problems with the bidding process, they did not rebid on the second round.
They did not.
Okay.
So and it wasn't a problem with the re, with the bid process on our side.
No.
The lowest, the lowest bidder in the first round, uh then came forwarded, was identified that they had missed certain items that they hadn't included. And so they withdrew their bid.
Right.
That generated the need to rebid. And when we came back, they did not bid.
Okay, but um but Hoyer, which did bid the first time, ended up being the
Right, and you heard Anthony's description of their qualification process there going through. So at any rate, here's my take on it. Troy Tassier is here from our pool committee and invite you to chime in as you wish.
It just gets more hard fun.
We're basically in a circumstance here where uh I I think if we can boil it down to three options, option one is we bite the bullet and spend more money than we ever intended, uh which is six million dollars. That's the reality of where we stand. Uh the, the uh bond uh runs that we have done suggest that that would correct, if I'm wrong, Eric, raise the average person's property taxes by about one hundred seventy dollars per year uh for the life of that bond, um which would be a twenty-year bond.
Yeah, uh I believe it's twenty years.
Right. In which case, if we agree to do that and we were to authorize that at our next meeting, which is August twelfth, Hoyer reports that that would give them enough time to mobilize and be on site right after the pool closes uh with the idea that the reconstruction could happen and that the pool uh weather permitting. Um obviously, there's some issues uh about the weather and how the winter goes in terms of the work, but uh Hoyer believes that they could have the pool up and running in time to open Memorial Day, and we would not lose a pool season. So, bottom line on that is that we need to decide if we're, if we're going to do this uh by our next meeting, which is three weeks from today, August twelfth. So option one is we bite the bullet and do it. Option two is we say, no, we're not going to do it. Uh but we're going to grapple with some of the infrastructure issues we know exist in the pool, including the progressive failure of the scuppers along the rim that recirculate water. Uh some years back, we had a number of a million and a half for that work. Uh that I'm sure has escalated to north of two million. And that would involve a number of changes to the piping that would uh likely reduce the size of the pool slightly. In order to accommodate the new piping, long story short, we would spend several million dollars instead of six, likely half the price to uh preserve the pool exactly the way it is, slightly smaller because of changes in the piping uh and connect the piping to the existing infrastructure, much of which is sixty years old. And the and the electric infrastructure would remain below grade. And we would have the same flooding risk. So that's the calculus that caused us way back when to say, that's not a logical solution. You wouldn't spend that kind of money to leave yourself with the same risks. You'd need to do it, right? Uh now that we're looking at six million, we can revisit that. And then the third option is that we do nothing. And that we uh basically hope for the best. I will say, based on all the conversations over many years, hope for the best means we know we have a pool that does not have a long-term future. At some point in time, uh the, these repairs that involve digging a lot up and upgrading a lot of things uh will have to happen. Is that next year? Is it five years? Is it ten years? We don't know. But what we do know is that the rec- re- recycling system of the water through the filters is failing. And at some point in time, it will fail in a way that means we have to shut down the pool. So option A, bite the bullet and do it. Option B, spend half as much money to solve the problems we know we have. Option three, don't do anything at the moment and hope for better times. If anybody else sees a different option, pipe up. Uh do, what what do you all?
I have some questions. So um alright, so obviously, the hundred and seventy dollars a year is a a rough estimate, right? So um does that factor in increasing uh pool subscriptions? Um is one question I have. Um and I guess the feels like a, an inadequate question, but are there places that we can cut the budget elsewhere? Is the other thing I'm thinking about.
Um so the the first question is, if we raise pool rates, it will generate revenue that can help cover the debt service, but you're probably knocking off about ten dollars on that, you know, so you go from a hundred and seventy to a hundred and sixty.
Okay, so it's not going to significantly impact the tax burden, okay.
Right, our goal, our, our expectation was we would raise pool rates and reflect the expense of the new pool. And that we would restore what we once had, which is a uh a higher rate for uh folks outside the Village tax base, was the Village taxpayers paying that annually and the school district taxpayer outside the Village is not. But again, we've never talked about turning that into an order of magnitude change, partly because we're trying to make this an affordable public pool and partly because we, we want a need. So I think the second question, are there ways to cut back? Um, you know, we could knock out, obviously, the the water slide. That I think was.
Not just the pool, I'm talking about more broadly in the budget, you know, um.
In our, in our overall budget beyond the pool.
Well, I mean, I mean, I know this is a small ticket item, but like one of the things that we've been discussing recently, for instance, is the music festival and, you know, whether that is affordable. So I'm just thinking about the services that we offer the community as a whole. And um how much each of those services is costing us and how we think about prioritizing those. You know, sort of the, the question of the affordability aside, to me, the, the pool ranks pretty high in the services that we provide the community. Um and so I just wonder if it's worth folding into the discussion. You know, uh things that we're spending on money on more broadly.
So it 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 certainly is um. I guess part part of the question there is. Is it realistic to imagine that there are places to cut that would make a noticeable difference in all of this?
Right.
Um, so the the debt service. Just looking at those numbers here.
I have them in front of me.
All right, so the annual, the annual cost for the debt service is potentially.
Um 441,000.
All right, so give or take $450,000 a year for the next 20 years to pay back the debt. That is what generated the 168 or whatever ballpark figure, dollar figures per per uh. Um typical village taxpayer. So I mean, if we, the the music festival last year cost us. Uh about $50,000.
Yeah.
Uh uh this year, the numbers aren't in, uh but it is likely more than that. A few years back, we made $40,000. There are so many variables attached to it. But if you just use the number 50,000, we could take that number of 450 and and uh reduce it to 400.
Right.
Uh give or take. So that would have been 10-ish, 15, 10, 12% reduction. So that $170 might, we could find $50,000 to save somewhere else, but $170 turns into 154 or something. So again, we're we're kind of tinkering around the edges unless we found a way to save a really large amount. And I, yeah.
I just think for me, just, I mean, it's, you know, it's crazy how much it's evolved into how. What we were thinking in the beginning and then what we're getting now for it, but. I do think that the pool is such an integral part for. Our residents, especially in the summertime, to be able to run camp. Uh without that, I don't know how many parents. Can, you know, try to find another place. And it just, I'm thinking about myself. I have two kids that are in the camp. Um essentially, it's like school for the summer. Um and you know, knowing that we couldn't just. Send the kids to Mount Pleasant. A lot of people really, that's an easy thing. And I, from what I've learned. I've heard and I've understood that that's not as simple as that. And we didn't even know Mount Pleasant would take. Our camp to be there, because they have their own camp that they run, their own programs, that's one. The second part is that. Um even if we wanted to go somewhere else, like let's say Westwood, again, that's a whole other. Kind of just putting it out there, but we're putting all of these people in. I don't know how we can run a camp. Not that we have to, but I feel like it is a service that is very valuable to the majority of. Of of our, of of I would say of all the 10570, not even just the village, but the actual 10570 residents. Because we have kids in the school district that go to the pool and um besides that, we have programs that we run there for kids. Um for for um seniors, so it's, you know, it's it's hard to think, obviously, the pool's only open from May to September. But in the time that it's active, it's incredibly um utilized by the village. So I think that it's. It's it's something that we need to have. And although it's so expensive, I do think that. I I don't know how we would be able to run all those other programs if we don't have that. Um I know that it would be very difficult for a lot of people to find other places to send their kids or things like that. So that's that's something that I think. For me, I think it's something that really weighs heavily on why I think we should.
For people who do have, I mean, of course, there are a lot of residents who don't have children that age. So that's something to factor too. But for people who do have children that age, that becomes an expense as well. They can't send their kids to somewhere.
So I might add to that, if you go back to the survey that the the pool committee had done, thank you, Troy and Jim and that whole group. Um, the pool has very significant support from quite a few seniors. Uh as well, so it's, it's easy to pigeonhole some of these things as primarily benefiting. Younger families as clearly this is, but it's it's got a broader. Base of support and need and and concern that.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Um.
I agree with you, um Paul. I think that it's highly used amongst, you know, obviously the camp. I I'm a little bit torn um from what I'm hearing from different residents about the fact that. It is really important and good for them, but I don't think that, um I think they'd much rather just. Uh the look of the pool to be updated and and just use it as it is, even if we have to update. Um as needed, uh if there's repairs that need to be done. I think those are some of the things that I've been hearing on my end where. As and again, I wasn't a part of the entire pool process and and the work that has been put in to get to where we are now. But I think that the rec department. The pool is very important, but I think indoor space is going to be a bigger component from what they use. You know, that's the majority of the year. As far, if we're talking about that age group, the pool is very important, but. You know what they really would use, if we if we were talking on a bigger scope and there was a. And the pool where wasn't where we were using the $6 million, you know, the rec department and and the way that those. The age group, it needs indoor space, you know, more than anything. I think that the pool is an amazing asset and we we use it, but. I don't know, I'm not personally, I don't really think that that's the number that we should move forward with or where we should use it.
So I I hear you and I certainly, I've gotten some feedback from folks, hey, the pool is okay the way it is. And um I I totally get that, except that the piece that's missing there is it's, it's okay the way it is until.
Until it's not.
Something unfixable breaks.
Yeah.
Which is, I I mean, we are, that is absolutely gonna happen at some point in the coming years. We don't know what when that year is. We're not talking about, you know, we're we're kind of in that circumstance of. Once your car hits 20 years, you you're sort of like, okay, I don't trust it quite as much as I did. And when something bad happens, should I spend that much money on it? And that's the situation we're we're in with the pool, which is, we know that the recirculation system. All around the perimeter of the pool is starting to fail. It is not an a- a possible, it's a fact. It's still working, but at the point at which it doesn't work. Having the pool the way it is is no longer an option. So the decision not to go forward and not to do anything. Um obviously frees up debt that could be used for another purpose, but it leaves us with the potential that the pool will cease to function. And if the pool ceases to function.
Right.
It will be a very expensive venture to figure what to do. And and we've discussed this in the past. Even if the decision were made at that time not to have a pool, it's no inconsequential expense to get rid of. You know.
Of course, yeah.
So I mean, I just, I just wanna make clear that, and I totally get why people would say, why would we spend that kind of money? The pool's okay the way it is. I like it. Um, it is understandable, but it doesn't take into account the fact that we are. On borrowed time with some parts of it.
Yeah.
So I I do also think that.
It's not as simple as, you know, let's build a rec center and get rid of the pool. Because we don't even have a place to build a rec center.
Yeah.
Um so.
But that's not even factored into the design of the pool. Just any any space there either, right?
Right, there's so even, exactly, even if we were to, let's say, not spend this on the pool, that's only in the summer. Then, you know, we're saving it to, you know, do a rec center, but where? We don't.
Well, and and we're looking at, that would be a much bigger figure, like.
There's no indoor space at the pool, right, guys? Like, there's no covered space at the pool. Is that correct?
They're they're, not to speak of, you could reconfigure the pool house a bit, but it's not a heated. Space, obviously, you could figure out a way to do that, but that would be.
No, I'm just spitballing here. It's just because I know that, you know, obviously, this number's above what we were talking about even in the beginning, since I've.
No doubt.
Yeah.
It's it's no doubt way above where we hope to be.
Yeah.
But we've, we've, you know, this is where we are and this is what the market has spoken. So, look, I if if we could find a way to have a rec center, I'm all in. The reality is, it is, you know, that project, even conservatively, is probably. Pushing $20 million uh uh to to imagine it. And that is a number that a community of 7,500. People I don't think can digest at the same time when we're talking about $6 million for water tanks and. A million and a half for rebuilding Anahagan Brook and.
What about the idea, what about the idea that? I mean, there's, if we bid it later or a year from now, it it could be more, right? Is that?
Or or less, I mean, you know, you never know, right?
And there's no way of, say, for example, at the new pool build, having a space that could be an indoor space. That the rec center, which is a huge part of the survey, right, that the younger kids using, could use in that area? And we can't incorporate that into the the design?
I I I will say.
Sorry, I if it seems farfetched, I understand.
No, that's fine. Look, I I I want that. Pipe up for sure. The the reality, here's my take on it, and 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 I think this part of it is probably pretty clearly true. The pool is where it is because 100 years ago, it was a watering hole uh in the path of a brook. And over time, it turned into a pool in the 20s and got grander over time. Now we have what we have. Nobody in their in their right mind would build a building in that location. Um, if there's any blessing to the fact that we have a pool in the path of a brook, it that at least it has water in it. Um, so you know, folks have said, for those who are very much interested in more turf fields, which is another. A request out there that has multimillion dollar price tag attached to it, couldn't we um. Uh knock all that down and put a field there. It 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 would be a terrible place for a turf field. It's it's a swamp, so. Uh Jonathan Cunningham has his hand up. Uh and uh. I don't have the capacity to give him the right to speak. Beware. See, yes. You there, Jonathan?
I i- i- am I here?
Yes.
Apparently you are. Pipe up. What what do you have to add to this?
Well, I I I I joined late, so I'm trying to, what what was the uh, what number did the competitive bids come in at again?
$6 million.
Okay, yeah. Um, so I I mean, look, I I the uh. I I think the, I think there there's a couple of 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 things that, when I think about that, uh. Uh I and I have thought about it. Um, I I would share, and that is, um. First of all, let's let's put the rec center aside, I'll come back to that, but when when, and I asked this. When we first started this conversation way, way, way back, and that is the idea of um. Uh, how would you think about splitting the cost of the pool between the user fee and the taxpayers? Um, and you know, when we were talking about, you know, one and a half to $3 million pool, it was. You know, less of an issue um than when you're talking about a a $6 million pool, which, which, you know, um. I I I find, I find that number stunningly high. Uh.
Welcome, I do too.
To the point where, you know, uh for a village of 7,500 people, where maybe you've got. 1,100 to 1,500 people that use the pool for two and a half to three months a year. I wouldn't want to be in your seats deciding how to how to justify that. Um, because that that just seems extravagant. Um, and and a alternative might be. To send the architect back to the drawing board and figure out if there is a more modest version that we could get away with. That would uh, you know, might not be as fancy, but could still entail some of the. I mean, I I that that's what we would do at home, right? I mean, if you if you got a an estimate for work that you wanted to do. Uh, and it came in too high, you'd figure out a way to scale that back. Um, but, you know, I I'm also. I I I don't want to be insensitive here, but uh the price elasticities, which the committee committee who surveyed the pool. Found to be present with um users of the pool. Uh, and that is they they could tolerate a small increase, but not a large increase. A larger increase, you know, kind of begs the question, how badly do they want it? I mean, if they're not willing to pay for it. Uh, you know, I I'm all in favor of things that somebody else pays for for me. Uh, it makes that decision a lot easier. Um, so I think that that's something that, while it is um. Uh, hard to talk about, um, something that, you know, I I I think is is worth uh. Part of your deliberation. Um, because uh, you know, as it turns, as it as it stands right now. My personal taxes will go up way more than any user fee. Uh is gonna, it it and I'm gonna pay more in taxes for this pool. Uh is part of my tax increase um than I would with a you, you know, the the any user fee is gonna do it. And you know, at some point, you gotta ask yourself, what's fair? And and um, and it's not just me. I mean, it's gonna affect everybody that way. And I think you need to. I think you need to have that as part of your deliberation, not to mention the fact that it'd be a lot easier if you were, that we were the school. Um, because this pool does service outside the village of Pleasantville. Um, and and how you will equitably uh treat the folks that are outside of the. The the village becomes much, much more difficult with it, with fees. Um, when you think about fees, as the price goes up. Um, because theoretically, um, you'd like them to pay something as close as possible to. The use, the the user cost, um, because they're not going to pay the tax increase. Um, and uh, you know, at 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 $3 million, you could sort of manage that a little bit better. At $6 million, it becomes, I think you'll find working the model extraordinarily difficult um. Uh, to do and, you know, and then then that leaves me with the question, well, if you can't get close to a user cost. For folks outside the village, then is it fair for you to be asking the taxpayers of the village? To essentially subsidize those folks to go to the pool? Again, back to the question, if they don't want to pay for it. How badly do they want it? Um, and I I, you know, I think these are, th- these are. Uh are are hard questions and and yet uh, uh at $6 million, y- y- you know. They're increasingly important questions that I think the board needs to ask, talk about transparently with the community. Have these hard conversations with the community and uh, and and in the end. Maybe those lead to a better uh, a a better view on terms of, in terms of what what it is uh and how best to proceed forward. Um, I think, Peter, it it gets a little dangerous for you to throw out numbers like $20 million for a. A rec center, because that's scary, scary numbers, and it it sort of shuts down that conversation. I'm not sure. A rec center built at the pool, if we took the pool out and built the rec center there, for example.
Let me just say, there is, I I think, no reasonable plan to build a building. On the side of the pool. It's a swamp.
Well, so so in a way, a- and and not to play devil's advocate, and I don't disagree with you. Uh but we're gonna build a pool on the side of a swamp, so it's like.
We we, we know what the lay of the land is. It is, i- i- if if we were starting from scratch to build a pool, you wouldn't build it there.
Right.
But we know why it's there and we know what the impacts are. They may get worse with uh a climate change. Perhaps they already are getting worse with climate change, but this project, if we do it. Will mitigate the biggest risk we have, which is that the subterranean uh mechanical room floods with eight feet of water in. It it will be above grid. What we're talking about and we know what happens is we get floodwater, muck, fish. Washing out of the pond and into the pool periodically.
I I know, I I know, I know.
But 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 again, my point about that is it ends up in the pool house and, you know, a a a day or two later, we're. Hosing out a a building that's meant to get wet wet and that isn't heated and isn't air conditioned. And we're back in business. When you're talking about a building that is a year-round building with. With HVAC and gym floors and, you know, God knows what, uh it's just a terrible place to put it. It's also not a big enough site. To accommodate such a building and the parking required for it tucked into A, an environmentally sensitive. Tucked into A, an environmentally sensitive area that connects to, uh, a natural area. But B, right there in a residential district. So if we're gonna build a rec center, I don't think that's the place to do it. So when I say twenty million, I, I don't think I'm, uh, trying to be presenting scare tactics. We went through the process, uh, a couple of years ago about the Girl Scout building, and acquisition and renovation of an existing building was pretty solid numbers. Architects involved ten million dollars. That's an existing building that already had a gym.
Yeah, but you also, you also had to buy the property too. So that was a.
Yeah, well, we would have to buy, we do not own any property, uh, uh, to build a, a rec center on. Do you think? I mean, where would that be?
Well, I mean, I, I, I mean, that's why I picked the pool as, as an example of a place where you could do it. There's also the existing rec center, yeah, you know, you can imagine that you can, you know, I don't know, Peter, I'm just saying that, uh, uh, throwing out large numbers, um, uh, i- 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 is, it, it kind of, it has a sort of chilling effect of shutting down the conversation whatsoever. And, and I'm not so sure that that's necessarily um, before we actually do the work and, and, and if we wanted to, and it may be that the board has no desire to go down the route of a, of our, you know, seriously looking at a rec center, but.
We're now, we're, we're well past our regular meeting start time, and we should continue this conversation. I, I'll call you and maybe you and I can get together, but what you're proposing, if I understand you correctly, is potentially to say we will no longer have a pool. And we will pay whatever it costs to get rid of it, and we would potentially buy property somewhere else and build a rec center that would include quite a bit of indoor space. Is that what you're suggesting as a possibility?
No, no, I, I, what I'm suggesting is that, um, uh, that, uh, we do a, some more work in terms of what, what users are gonna be willing to pay to have a pool. To potentially reconfigure the pool to a much more modest design that is potentially significantly cheaper. Um, and then, and then, and then, um, uh, anecdotal, well, not annually, but separately, I, I was just commenting on the, all, you know, alternatives for those funds. Uh, whether you want to go forward with a rec center or not, I was just saying that, you know, it's easy to throw out big numbers. Um, I was just reacting to the fact that you would throw out such a big number for a rec center, um, which basically says there's just, and I don't disagree with you, twenty million dollars, rec center is really not in the cards, right? But, uh, I'm not sure that that's the, that, that's the, the, the right number, um, either, uh, so.
Yeah, so may, maybe let's put the question on the rec center side for, for right now. So, um, yeah, so I, I think you bring up a couple of good points. I think certainly the user fee is something that we've been talking about for quite a while. I think when you talk about willingness to pay for resident, for village residents, it becomes more complicated, right? Because we're, we would already all be paying the taxes for the rebuilding of the pool, and some village residents may be able to afford to pay, you know, a, a, a greater fee on top of that. But some, for some others, that would be much more difficult. So if we're really trying to invest in a public service, you know, that has to be, tho- those different factors have to be considered. But well, one, one thing that where I feel like you're thinking along similar lines to what I'm thinking, listening to all this, is that it would be worth our while to, um, include more voices in this conversation, and, you know, to open this up, I think, to a bigger, um, discussion uh, with the community. So, so that's something that I would.
Yeah, and I'm sorry if I rustled any feathers there. Really, it's just that I think with a small space, I think you need multi-use things. That's really what I was trying to comment on, is that for such a large budget of the pool, like, could we have a twofold use for it? I, in nowhere do I think that we should open up a twenty million dollar project for Plasmo with all that we have going on. It's more along the lines of, can we find a way to be creative in a small space?
And, and Peter, I, I, I thought that that nanny, I mean, I was, I, I, I could be wrong, because I, I, but I thought that the Nanny Hagan Brook reconstruction was to get it done from basically the pool down, not including the, uh, not including any work that you need to do to, if you were gonna put the pool in, was several million dollars, not just a million and a half. I thought a million and a half was just one, one section of it. Did I get that wrong?
Yeah, yeah, well, no, there are two things there. The one piece, and the piece that we have at the moment taken off the table, was building another big culvert essentially under the pool property.
Okay.
And connecting to the brook just past the parking lot.
As flood mitigation.
Right, just a, another way to get water past the pool.
Yeah.
But the one point five million I mentioned is the reconstruction of the brook, essentially from the point where it emerges below the pool parking lot, down to the bridge at PCTV, where the sides of the brook, which are, are eroded, are now creating a risk to the road and to the, a big warming. So that's a million and a half, right?
Yeah, because I thought, I thought that there were, I thought that when the, the, the engineer that gave that presentation, whoever it was that gave that presentation, actually had that section broken up into like three pieces.
Yeah.
And he did.
And just one piece was a, a million and a half to two and a half million dollars.
A million, right, a million and a half for the first piece, if I. Right, but we, we have no choice. We're gonna have to do that.
And, and, and again, that's my, I, I guess that, that's part of what I, I, I am trying to understand as I think about the holistically, about village finances, about, uh, you know, spends that are not discretionary like that versus discretionary spending, which would be, you know, you could put to a degree, the pool under that category with certain caveats, but certainly much more discretionary than, you know, uh, making sure that the water tanks are functioning or that that stream is not eroding out, you know, uh.
Yeah, right.
You know, aspects, so, um, and it.
All right, so.
It, it's no longer just a couple thousand bucks. It's, it's serious money, so.
It is serious money. So I'll, I'll call you, because I, I'd be interested in kicking this around in, in, in substantial detail. I appreciate that, but we gotta move on here, uh, because we're.
I, I didn't realize we were not part of meeting yet. I'm sorry.
No, we, we're still part of the work session officially, but I, I think we kept it going into a foreign conversation. Troy.
Okay.
Troy Tassier is here. He was part of the pool committee.
Yeah.
Uh, what did you have to add to this?
Hi, Mayor and Board. I, I know you're way over time. Thousand things I could say. I don't want to take, uh, too much time. And I don't think anyone is going to argue that six million dollars is a big price tag and bigger than any platform we started. Um, you know, we, uh, I think in the past have spent a lot of time, uh, talking about the importance of the pool. We had a huge response, uh, in the survey we sent out, where someone say, I don't know if it was a record, which we compared to like village votes, but the number of respondents we had was just overwhelming, I think, even to the task force. It's been around for a hundred years. We've talked about that at length. I'm not gonna get into labor that. Um, but I just want to, um, respond to a couple of things that I've heard tonight, just to, to clarify a couple of things. Um, so number one, on sort of a, a more modest design, um, I've been in a number of meetings with Steve Burkumis, uh, who designed the pool. Like Brooks on the roadmap. And, you know, I've heard out of his mouth, um, there's nothing, even though the pool looks really great, and I think it, you know, it does look fantastic, and every kid that walks by, those, you know, muck upset the pool, their eyes just light up when they see it, and they, uh, first thing they do is ask their parents when it's gonna be here. Um, but what Stephen said is that there's really nothing special in the design that's going to save money. Uh, most of the cost of the pool, um, again, I'm not an engineer, but my understanding is most of the cost of the pool is digging a hole and filling it up. And that there's nothing real special about the design that's increasing the cost. So unless you were to, you know, maybe shrink the pool by fifty percent or something, I don't think you're gonna see a big savings in any way.
Yeah, I've heard the same.
Yeah, that's a question you can ask Steve, but I, I don't think it's, it's a question of, uh, doing something simpler and, and working on the price tag and have or something. It's just not realistic. Um, and then on, on the mayor's, uh, different options, um, you know, go ahead uh, versus the refurbishment. I, I also just want to remind everyone that, and again, these are numbers from memory. I don't have, uh, specific notes, but my memory is that the pool refurbishment, when we first started this, was somewhere in the neighborhood of one and a half to two million.
That's my memory as well.
In the new pool, that time we thought it was gonna be like, you know, three to three and a half.
Also true.
And it just didn't make sense to.
Come on, word.
To do the refurbishment. And, you know, if we don't do six million dollar pool, it's not like we're going back to one and a half to two million again. My expectation is those ratios probably have to change or a bunch.
Right, probably fifty percent to refurbish. And as I mentioned, the refurbishment is not getting in a lot of the infrastructure, it's just.
Right, and again, it's, uh, to use your, your, uh, example earlier, Mr. Mayer, right, it might be I'm not a, a car mechanic either, but I imagine it's like putting a new engine in an old car and all the other stuff. Could fall apart, who knows?
True.
So, um, and then just, uh, the last thing, um, and I know that there's a lot of, uh, talk right now about, you know, going back to full task force, maybe surveying for, um, willingness to take on additional pool pieces from different people. Honestly, time, I think, is, is really getting short here. Um, if we, uh, delay this much further, we're not gonna be able to build it in August. We've already pushed it back two years, and that's when we've seen this price go from three to three and a half going to six million. And I worry that if we don't move ahead now, um, that this may never happen, because I, you know, no one can predict the future, but I really don't see it being cheaper next year, and it's probably gonna be more expensive. Lots more.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So, I mean, I just, we, we need to move on to our regular meeting, and, and obviously we'll continue this conversation. But as I mentioned earlier, we have to decide if we're gonna do it. Uh, if, if the thought of shoveling the ground right after the pool closes this season, we have to decide that three weeks from today at our August twelfth meeting. So that's kind of the deadline to decide whether we're gonna go ahead now. Um, and then the last thing I just want to add to the mix is, you know, and obviously as Jonathan pointed out, there's the question of, you know, what would people be willing to pay in, in the membership fees? Um, but, you know, a, an overlay to that or, or an element of that conversation is what this pool has always been for these hundred years is a place where community members have gathered uh, at, at every level of the economic spectrum. Uh, and, and by and large, because of public investment, it was made possible for most people to be able to do it. Uh, obviously, very much cheaper than the cost of, of joining a private pool or private slums. And, uh, we have continued, uh, that as well. And so, obviously, when we talk about a six million dollar expense, there are a whole series of things that come into play, but one, one does wonder, uh, whether, uh, this is a moment where we also think about, uh, maintaining to the extent that we can in a world where I don't know where regular people are gonna live, the possibility for, uh, folks to come together at the pool, uh, at, at, at every level of the economic strata that continues to exist here, and, and people sometimes misunderstand how broad that spectrum is. There are a whole lot of people, and Troy will recall from the survey, a lot of people said, um, you know, the most important thing for them was to keep it affordable, because it's a struggle for them. Uh, so it ain't so easy to live here and, uh, uh, for lots of people, and that's something to factor in as well. And obviously, that goes into tax increases as well, so there you have it. So I think we should move on, and we'll continue this conversation, and, and I think we, we're gonna get back to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and converse about that. Maybe that the right answer is for us to convene a special work session sometime between now and that August twelfth, specifically devoted solely to this, if that makes sense. What do you guys think?
Great.
That sounds good.
All right. All right, with that, we're, we're, uh, we apologize to whoever was waiting for us, if in fact anyone is waiting for us. Uh, so we will end our work session and begin our regular session. Uh, brief pause. Good evening, all. Welcome to the Village Board meeting. Uh, this is the regular meeting for today. Monday, July twenty-two of the Village Board. We've just finished an extended work session, which ran half an hour over. So if anyone was waiting on Zoom, we apologize uh, for having, uh, kept our work session going. If you had, had joined in Zoom, you heard whatever piece you heard of a of a difficult conversation about whether or not to proceed with the replacement of the village pool, which is now known to be a six million dollar project. Um, as I just mentioned at the end of the work session, I think we're gonna, uh, convene a special work session sometime between now and our next regular meeting, which is August twelve, uh, to converse about that specifically. Uh, but in the meantime, we're back to our regular affairs. As is always the case, you can, uh, pick up the Zoom link for this meeting and meetings of other boards and commissions at plezville-ny.gov. Uh, and within a few days, the Zoom recording of our work session and this reg- regular meeting uh, can be found on PCTV seventy-six dot org, uh, on an on-demand webcast. Uh, so a couple of announcements, uh, to make, and then I will invite public comment, and then we have a public hearing. Uh, those announcements I wanted to make, uh, sound like this. Uh, last Saturday, uh, we had, uh, uh, amazingly, uh, a moment in the otherwise grim weather report when the Pleasantville Music Festival happened and it didn't rain on it. It rained, uh, on the morning as we were setting up, and, uh, uh, it had, uh, been a grim and dispiriting weather forecast for the previous several days, uh, leading all of us to uh, fear greatly what the future held. So thank you, weather gods, uh, whoever you may be, for, um, helping us out and making it possible for the day to happen. Obviously, it had an impact on the box office. A lot of folks are looking at the weather and saying, oh my God, it's, uh, crazy, as we were, uh, as well. And then finally, the weather cleared, but it was still very, very hot, as has been the case. Uh, but, um, even amid that, we ended up with all told, well over three thousand people on the field, uh, between ticket buyers and kids and uh, bands and their entourage, uh, four hundred-ish volunteers, uh, and a whole bunch of vendors, so. It was a tough, a tough, uh, ramp up to it, and, uh, likely a, a money-losing venture, but I can tell you it was a great day. Uh, we had fewer problems than ever. I think the feedback from most everybody was a great day, a great vibe, what a great thing that Pleasantville does. Um, uh, our prime sponsor, Northwell Health, thanks, uh, to them for, uh, their third year of being the presenting sponsor for this music festival. Uh, we had a visit, uh, from David Seligman, who's the regional executive for the Western Region of Northwell, and Beata Mastlers, who's the executive director at Phelps, and Derek Anderson, who's the executive director at North, at Northern Westchester, uh, both, uh, the, the two Northwell hospitals in our realm. All three of them stood on the stage to introduce the last band. Uh, and, um, uh, I think they, uh, they felt the vibe of one who was a great day here in Pleasantville, so. Um, there'll be a lot of, uh, of, uh, unpacking all that went on, but the message today is a thank you to those four hundred volunteers who helped every possible, every possible way, every possible year on with, uh, good spirits and a good humor, uh, uh, doing jobs large and small. Um, thanks to the, to, to our, our folks here in Village Hall, particularly um, Alyssa, who sits here, and, and Eric, uh, Morrissey, the administrator. Those two people, uh, Alyssa in particular, have their lives consumed by the music festival in the weeks that ramp up to it. People have no idea. Uh, so thank you to you guys. Um, and, uh, eh, maybe, uh, first and foremost, but appropriate to say last, uh, a shout out to our executive director, Bruce Fegler, who's done this for many years, and, uh, who did this this year as kind of the lead co-director with Doug Panero, who, uh, has, uh, uh, promised to take on next year the lead co-director job as Bruce, uh, serves as his sidekick, uh, leading toward a new generation of leadership, so. Um, Bruce is a, a nearly irreplaceable figure. Uh, Doug, uh, strikes all of us as, as the guy that could replace a nearly irreplaceable figure. Uh, but, uh, the community and the, and the folks that go to that festival have simply got no idea, none whatsoever, of what goes on, uh, and the work that Bruce Fegler does to make that whole thing happen. Uh, a, a labor of love that delivers, uh, an extraordinary day that a bunch of people said to me this year, as they have in some years past. Best day of the year in the village of Pleasantville. So it's a struggle to do it. I've often said it's way too big for us to do, and, and way too good not to do it. Uh, there are certainly gonna be some economic challenges to confront, and we'll have to decide what that looks like going forward, but for today, a week from the festival last week, uh, congratulations to all, and thanks to everybody who participated, and thanks to everybody who came, so. Um, I've got a long list of updates, uh, uh, about our capital projects and the like, but let me stop now and invite anybody from public who has something to say. Uh, very welcome to do so now.
Good evening, and for the record, I'm Francesca Haggers-McHale, twenty-four Brentwood Drive, Pleasantville. Um, you know, it's, it's so much better to come here in person than to watch it on Zoom, I have to tell you, and I can watch it on Zoom all the time.
Come early, come often.
I know, I know. Um, you know, along the lines, I have a different metaphor than the, the car. You know, along the lines, I have a different metaphor than the car with the 20,000 miles, or 200,000 miles replacing the engine. Mine is you need to fix the roof before it rains. And I came last time to talk about moving village elections to November, and the discussion centered around what's the rush since we don't have a village election coming up next year, that we don't need to push it. And I feel that it would be a much better image to do this, to put a referendum on the ballot before we need to, because if we wait another year, then those village elections will be the following March, and, you know, we're going to be moving them to the next November anyway. So, if we have it as in place already, that it's not surrounding a village election, it looks better. Now, that having been said, we did collect some signatures. This is not signature season right now, I can tell you this, that a lot of people are away, it is hard to get the required amount, but we kind of just stopped. We just said, look, we're going to appeal to the village board, and when I say we, I have two people here, but there's other people at home watching, and say, look, consider, please, putting it on a referendum this November to move village elections to November the following year. And that would mean that when the March elections come up, Nicole and Paul would serve an extra part to their term. They wouldn't just exit that March or stay that March, depending on who wins that election. Now, also, the question was about whether this would be turned into a more partisan. You know, it's tradition that we're nonpartisan. We would keep the tradition that it's nonpartisan, and I very much appreciate the fact that elections here are nonpartisan because we get to engage everybody in the community in our discussions. They're not voting for a this or a that, they're voting for the person, and they're voting for the person that represents the issues better. Having six to eight weeks to present the issues the way you would do them better is not good. It's not enough time, it's not enough exposure. The people in front of me here have always run uncontested elections except for the last two years, because I decided to mess things up, but that's the only reason. You know, you were here the first time because no one opposed you, and no one, did they?
My first election was contested, but anyway. Yeah, yeah.
As I recall, I don't recall. Thank you for correcting me. But I do feel that it's a way of us presenting issues in a way that the entire community can get involved. Again, this week on Facebook, here they were complaining about what's going on at Memorial Plaza with the trees and this and that, and I very clearly said, look, guys, you know, you can complain on Facebook all you want, but that doesn't get you anywhere. The only way to be, to get anything done around here is to make sure that, A, you subscribe to the village website and click every single box. You want to be informed, even if it doesn't affect you, from everything from Panther Club to the senior activities. Okay? All right? The second thing is to come to board meetings or watch them on Zoom. Third is to vote in village elections. And that cut the conversation. Nobody responded negatively to that. This is what needs to happen to get this entire village of 7,000-plus people engaged and the 5,000 voters engaged. Okay? 621 or 641, now it's all mixed up in my head, 641 voters is not telling us that people are engaged. They're still whining on Facebook, and it is not the way that people are involved. I just listened to the conversation about the pool. To open it up to a committee discussion again, is this something that people, I did, I ran on, that this needed to be front and center at all times, the discussion needed to take place. Well, here we are. It's end of July, and we're still shuffling it around. People have to be engaged in village elections, just like they're engaged in the Pleasantville Music Festival. I'm a volunteer as well. I enjoyed myself immensely. I've never sweated so much in my life, but, you know, being involved and engaged are true citizens of the village of Pleasantville, and the only way they can be engaged is to vote. And the only way to really get out the vote is to make it coincide with the general election. It doesn't have to be during the presidential election, but it has to be on the general election day. That means everybody from dog catcher to, you know, to mayor, to everything is on the ballot. And then we get to have forums, we have legal board, voters come in, conduct debates, have various ways to expose the candidates to the voters, and it's the voters that count because the voters pay the taxes, and the voters chose to live here, and they would like to be engaged. If we saw the turnout the other day, if there's 400 volunteers for the Pleasantville Music Festival and only 641 people voted, what does that tell you? You know? So, I'm happy to talk about, but I also want to emphasize this is not partisan, and I did have a question about that from you, Mr. Mayor, that is this part of the pleasant democratic or whatever? No. I came up with this idea myself because I was shocked at the low turnout again. I thought there was at least, since there was a contested election, that people would come out, more people would come out to vote, and they didn't. So, I really think that this is something that should be considered for this November, and it's not going to endanger anything, it's going to enhance our village more.
So, could I just, first, we had a long conversation about this last time, and a bunch of long conversations to be had. Let me just say three things. First, just to back up what you said at the start, instead of thinking about putting in new engine in an old car, your metaphor was
Fix the roof.
Fix the roof, as if to suggest that somehow or another, we haven't fixed the roof along the way, and now we're talking about
Well, 641 people is
Hold on, we're talking about the pool. That was my
I know, but I
I just did not want to leave anyone
Be friendly about it.
Well, so feel free to be temperous if you have this view. We're not talking about a village board that has refused to repair the pool over time. We spent hundreds of thousands of dollars repairing the pool over time.
Yes.
But the reality we confront is, in the end, we have a pool that is now 60-ish years old and which has infrastructure that no longer meets the current code. It's pre-existing, non-compliant. We are annually certified, it's a safe pool, but we can't make significant changes without ripping the whole thing up and rebuilding. So, we're not talking about, what we really are talking about now is can we continue the way we have, you know, fixing the roof, your metaphor, or is the time to say we're throwing good money after ban? So, that's, I just wanted to point that out.
Well, okay. I am an educated person, and I know what the metaphor is, and I was going to, I was preparing my speech this evening with a different metaphor, and that's what I was saying. It's interesting that we use metaphors in our presentation. And so therefore, my metaphor here tonight is why don't we fix the village election system before an election?
Okay.
And therefore, we are fixing the roof before it rains.
Okay, go.
Before the low turnout. I appreciate
Forgive me if I misunderstood what you're
And I was appreciating the fact that you were speaking in metaphors as well.
Never metaphor, I didn't know.
Because I was educated to appreciate metaphors.
Okay, so, the other point I wanted to make is you suggest that this is, obviously, and I understand that you think this, a clear and obvious good to make this change. That is not universally held. I don't hold that view, and I can tell you I don't hold that view because I've talked to many, many, many people over 20 years in villages like ours about the well springs of the idea and the result of it, and I have yet to meet a single person in any other community who has presented it as the absolute 100% benefit that you present. So, that's a discussion that's worth having, and I am happy to have it, and I'm happy to have it for our community, but when you were here two weeks ago, I understood you to agree that there wasn't urgency and that we didn't have to decide by August 5th to put this on the, on some sort of referendum.
Okay, if you agree with me, then I think that the Board of Elections has said that in order to get all the ballots prepared, that August 5th, but I, you know, is the deadline. But that's why I'm here again, because I'm thinking that, you know, I know you've talked to people and I've talked to people, and some people are absolutely relieved that village elections are in November, and some people are not. And, you know, we brought up pastings, and I know why the mayor there was not thrilled and had to take a partisan stand in order to get re-elected, and that had nothing to do with what we run on here in Pleasantville. Okay? It was an international issue. So, you know, I don't want to mix, let's mix metaphors.
Are there any November elections locally that are nonpartisan?
Well, we'll see what happens. Sleepy Hollow just changed. They used to run partisan elections, and then there was an intramural spat within the parties, which is painfully common, and now they're running as theoretically independent parties. We'll see how that plays out. It will be interesting to see how it plays out, but there's a lot to be said here, and there are legitimate arguments on both sides. I disagree with you that this change can be made and to preserve the nonpartisan quality of what we do. I simply don't agree with you. I don't agree with you, and I've yet to find anyone in any of these other communities that agrees with you that the opportunity to roll all this stuff together into a November election improves the focus on village issues. I've yet to find anyone who will say that. You may know people who will, and that's part of the conversation we'll have.
I do.
Here is what I understood us to agree two weeks ago, and that was, we weren't going to rush to do this, you weren't going to try to force a referendum for
We did stop signatures. Okay, I'm just here talking, and I think discussion is important.
I totally do. So, I am 1,000% willing, a million percent willing, to convene some public conversations about this. We can have a work session totally devoted to it. We could have
That's a good idea.
Sessions with you guys. I totally agree that increasing turnout is a good thing, and is something we should focus on, and I think there are some ways we can get at that, and some of them I think you certainly agree with, and some of them perhaps not, but there's a lot to be said about it.
Right. And I just wanted to address some, another board member brought up the fact that maybe, you know, a super PAC could fund someone for the village election. I would make a law, a village rule, that contributions cannot exceed a certain amount, and that no PACs could contribute.
I'd be shocked to think we have the right to do that.
I think that individuals in most elections have a limit on how much they
In state law.
Yeah.
I mean, we don't have, what, I mean, that
Well, we could figure something out. Let's put it that way.
I don't see that as a realistic way for it. Look, it's
I don't see PACs funding us either.
Republicans and Democrats could run right now.
Yeah.
There's nothing in the world to stop them
Right.
Other than the fact that I can tell you, many people over many years have said, oh, my God, I wish we were like Pleasantville. So
But then why have all but five villages, including ours, moved over to November elections?
Largely, largely partisan issues. It has been party-driven.
But can I just say, since I wasn't here last time, I appreciate your premise, which is that we need more civic engagement, and I think that that's a good point. I guess I am skeptical about the conclusion that you reached that the moving the elections to November would necessarily precipitate more civic engagement. It probably would mean a larger voter turnout, simply because people are coming to vote for elections at a larger level, right? But that doesn't necessarily mean that they're following what's happening in a village election. In fact, it could have the opposite effect, which is that, you know, if you're looking at this November, obviously, we're looking at an extremely dramatic election. You know, chances are that it would mean that they were even less focused on local issues. So, I'll just say that there's a side issue here that I think warrants some attention, although it's a very difficult one, I think, in, you know, in our current sort of oversaturated with information world of how people can get more, how we can get people more engaged. You know, whether or not the moving the election would actually yield that result, that's, I personally am skeptical of that, and I share with Peter the concerns about the partisan issues because I've seen that too. You know, I've been to a number of conferences, both within Westchester County and on the state level, and it changes the dynamics of local government dramatically when you have people running on party lines.
Absolutely. And, you know, I mean, you know, I would still like to encourage people to run on the Happy Pleasantville line and the Dynamic Pleasantville line. And yes, we're down below, you know, but I just think that civic engagement is so important because then you're not dealing over and over with people complaining about the same things when they could be focused and voting on them, and there's got to be a way. And I would say the easiest way is to have people vote in November.
Well, I'm just saying, having, you know, how many years have I served now?
Lots, since I've met you, since I've met.
So, you know, we, you know, from the get-go, I have been involved in village communications. You know, I started the Facebook page for the village, I started the social media presence, we hired people to be involved with communications, and we've continued to expand that more and more. And Yemi, who just joined us, is also interested in that and looking at new ways, and, you know, so we have all participated in, you know, how can we get people to learn what's happening in village government, and how can we get them to be more engaged and more involved? And I think it's a very prickly, complicated issue because people are just bombarded, you have busy lives, you know, and they're bombarded with information, and at the end of the day, I think there has to be also a willingness on the part of citizens to want to participate in that process, right? It's not something you can force down people's throats.
The easier you make it to be participatory, the more participatory they will be. There are people that were not even aware that there was a village election, and believe me, I knocked myself out. So
So then they
Which is the next question, you know, how are people not paying attention to, you know, what's in front of their face?
You know, if you hang that banner, maybe, you know, the banner
What is that argument, Francesca? You, to your eternal credit, worked extremely hard. You sent mailings to every household.
Yeah.
There were examiner articles, there were PCTV articles. We commented about the fact that elections are happening. We sent out emails that elections are happening. If you encounter someone who didn't know there was an election, that's somebody who's just really pretty much not plugged in, and that person who shows up in November is going to say, oh, I have a strong feeling. You know, the reality here is
It gives us more time to
It's not a matter of, you could start running. I mean, you have a Facebook page that says, Francesca
I have to figure out how to change that.
For village trustee. So I assume you're 24/7 in election mode, at least that's what it says.
I'm not running yet.
So, here we are.
It almost killed me.
The reality here is, is I can assure you that whining on Facebook does not slow down because we've, any community has changed their election date. You know, people cannot get it, it's human nature, like something happens up. What? I didn't know that. Click, 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 click. So, Jonathan, can I have something to say? But we can't, we can't spend an hour on this at every board meeting because we'll spend, we will spend hours on it at an event specifically on this subject, and if I understood
Discussion alters it.
But if I understood our exchange two weeks ago, we agreed that we would not try to force this by August 5th to get this on for November because the next election is not until March 2026, or in the hypothetical that we move it, November 2026, well over two years from now, and there are strong feelings on both sides, and it's fair and reasonable to air them out. And you have my commitment that I'll participate in that effort, in an open, transparent effort, to air those And you have my commitment that I'll participate in that effort, in an open, transparent effort to air those issues out.
But don't ask me whether I'm being partisan. That's the thing. I am not being partisan.
Okay.
Okay, I'm being civic minded.
I hear you.
Okay, so I don't, I wanna take that off the table.
Okay.
Because, and that's why I'm here to say that. I'm not saying in an email, I'm not phoning you.
Great.
I'm saying that this is not partisan, this is civic minded. And I think the most important thing in the world is civics.
And I, and I respect that. I believe you. Thank you for saying that. I can tell you that in almost every community that's made this change, it has either been overtly or, or below the surface, a partisan effort. Every single place.
Wow.
And so if we're different, that'd be great. I love the idea.
Yeah.
Does it fear me? It does. So Jonathan, what did you have to say? And then we gotta move on.
Yeah, and I, I, I'll keep my comments brief and happy to participate in, in a, a further, more designated uh, um, discussion. Uh, but I, I guess um, uh, two observations. One, um, it, it's hard, it, it, while, while, while both sides, I think, make a, a valid case. Um, it is, it is hard to, in my mind anyways, and I try to justify it, try to figure it out. Um, but uh, because I don't wanna see us turn partisan either. But uh, either we trust the voters or we don't. I mean, you know, that, that's kinda where I come down on it at the end of the day, you know? I'm, you, you make a case, um, uh, and uh, uh, and, and you make it, you know, as strongly as you can and then you leave it to the voters. I mean, that's the way it works. Uh, and you know, if the voters uh, of Pleasantville either won, wanna have a, a, a March election because it's a lot more convenient, I might argue that, you know, in a way, and it, and, and I don't wanna say this because I don't want you to jump down my throat and, and anybody interpret this as me saying that there's any intentionality to do it all. But there's a certain level of voter suppression that happens, one might argue, with a March election. Um, either because of fatigue or lack of whatever. Um, and having six hundred people vote in a, you know, where you have five hundred or five thousand registered voters isn't healthy either. Um, and so uh, uh, I think it's in the best interest, you know, that, that this gets discussed and aired because I, I do think that there are arguments on both sides, but at the end of the day, I, I think it's hard to argue not to put a referendum up because you're gonna say, well, I don't trust the voters then. Um, and then take it one step further. If voters don't want it to be partisan, then they won't vote for partisan candidates. Uh, uh, so, you know, I believe in the system. Um, and I, you know, for me, it's, you know, I, I get torn because I don't wanna see it risked becoming partisan. But at the same time, I'm one vote of five thousand people in this village that have the right to vote. And uh, you know, at some point, it occurs to me that we should leave it, you know, it, it, it should be left to the village voters to decide.
Um, so let me just, I, I agree with most of what you said, Jonathan, and these are matters that we'll tease out in the course of this conversation Yeah. over the coming months. But the reality, I mean, it's easy to see the track record of these referenda, which is that they pass, generally speaking, very easily, often overwhelmingly. Why is that? That's because the average voter who is not uh, plugged into the full range of the issues uh, as you are says, oh, that'd be great. That's easier. Sure. Yes, yes. Go. That makes sense. Like, would you go to the grocery store twice? No, you'd go once and buy both things. That, the thinking doesn't go beyond that. And I understand that. I, I don't criticize it other than the fact that what it fails to recognize is that there are a whole bunch of other factors that come along with it. So.
Right. Well, and, and again, Peter, that's, but that's the system, right? I mean, we could make that argument against, uh, uh, for every, you know, every vote. And, and I, I'm not here to cast aspersions, but honestly, in a contested election, when you have candidates that win, that did not actively, did not actively campaign in six hundred and some people vote, you, you know, you gotta, you gotta ask yourself the question, is, is the system working as efficiently as it should be? Um, and in the best interest of the entire community. And by the way, I agree with you. There's gonna be complaining on Facebook, no matter what we do. So uh, you're not taking that, you're not taking that away. That's, that's a sport.
Be shut down in the month of whatever the.
Yeah, exactly. Uh, so, uh, you know, that's just sport. Um, and uh, and I hope that you guys, you know, who sometimes unfairly take a, a blow for it, don't take it personally.
Yeah.
But uh, uh, but nonetheless, uh, I, I'm happy to participate in this discussion. I've thought a lot about it. Um.
And we will engage you. I appreciate that.
Going forward.
All right. Thank you, John.
And please let me know when you're gonna have a work session and I've come up with more metaphors.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Francesca. Do you guys wanna say something?
Say something.
Sure. Just need your name and address, if you will.
My name's Nancy King. I live at two ninety-three Mandelwood, Pleasantville Gardens, Convent. And um, I have been asking people, my friends and neighbors and coworkers, what they think about having an election vote to November. And all of them said, it's a no-brainer. They'd love to have that. And um, and they're Republicans or Democrats. I said, it's nonpartisan. And they, you know, they all agreed. And I feel what I'm getting from you guys is that you think you know better, that you're the authorities and you know what's best. And I think you need to leave it up to the voters to decide.
So let me just re- respond to that in one way, which is that I'm not surprised you had that feedback and I respect that feedback and I thank you for offering it. Uh, I, I will say that amid the, the, the respect folks have for nonpartisan elections, within the last six weeks, I had a vigorous and extended conversation with one of the leaders of the Mount Pleasant Democrat uh, uh, organization. I'm a lifelong Democrat, who said, oh, we're gonna set up a screening committee and we're gonna run somebody on the Democratic line. So he eventually said, based on my concern about that, okay, maybe we won't do that. That happened six weeks ago. So that could happen. I can't stop it. It would just be a bad thing.
Yeah.
Your opinion?
Yeah, well, I mean, the thing with surveys, the tricky thing with surveys is that a lot of, it depends on how you ask the question, right? Like, so if you ask the question, you know, would you rather have the election in November and have it switched to a partisan election? Or would you rather keep the election in March and have it continue to be nonpartisan? You might get a slightly different result. So I guess, you know, it's like with these, a lot of these issues, like the amount of information that people have in order to make the choice is gonna affect the choice that they make, right? And so I guess what we're saying is that if we are gonna have a discussion, we would like to have it be an informed discussion. A lot of the decisions that we do, that we have to make require doing research, right? Like I myself, you know, when presented with, you know, a question like, well, we've been struggling with the pool, for instance, I will have that like immediate response to a question like, oh, this seems like the obvious answer, right? But at the same time, I know that, you know, in order to do the responsible thing as a trustee, I have to do the research that is required in order to really understand what is at stake. And so I guess what we're suggesting is that we would like, if we're gonna have a communal conversation about this, to have it be an informed conversation, not just a, would you like X or Y? Do, do you understand what I'm saying?
I do understand what you're saying.
Yeah. So, and I mean, I think you're right that, 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 that this warrants having more people involved in the discussion. Um, and you know, the more people can participate, the better. Yeah, yeah, me sorry.
Yeah, if I could just chime in. Yeah, thanks for coming. Um, for everyone that's talking about this issue. I think it's really important. Um, I think that one option we could do, and I don't know how you guys feel about this, is we as a village could put more effort into the, when the elections are in March. So as a test run.
I mean, communicating it.
Yeah, just communicating it, not just through emails, but just, you know, through where people's, the pedestrian traffic in town and just being able to have more, just as one option. I, I, I by no means think that I have no better by any means. So that's just like the lowest on my tier because my biggest reason for running was trying to help voice what other people felt like the village wasn't hearing. And, you know, the community that we have is so special and I think it's important. One, one of the biggest things I've been speaking about with, with our board in these past times is how can we find a good way to communicate better, quicker, more concisely. Um, specifically about these elections and moving into November. I guess I've always felt that Pleasantville is really butted in between two very politically strong towns, uh, Chapacqua and Thornwood, uh, like the Mount Pleasant area. And I really feel like it's been a long history of ours to remain neutral. Um, I don't think that's because I think I know better. I think it's just because it's such a great product of Pleasantville to have that. And I do think that making sure we hear what people want to do is important. But what I've noticed on my time on the board is that there's the element of what people are saying, of course, that makes sense. Like I've been bringing up the pool issue to many other residences. I've, just many other people in the village trying to say, well, what would you wanna do? And give them this survey option. But there's a lot of background and bigger understanding that I've been learning and I'm trying to communicate that to other village residents. Just like moving the election is not as black and white as, oh, March to November. There's, there's these, there's more color to it. And I think that if we can communicate that, I think that would also be helpful.
Well, when I ask people in the future, I will try to ask it with more.
Yeah, so did, did, just wanna make sure I didn't misunderstand. Did, did, you said, um, is it your opinion that if we ran as Republicans and Democrats, that that would be advantageous?
No, I didn't say that.
No, I, I just, you said in my opinion, I was expressing concern about running on party line side. Maybe I misunderstood.
No.
Okay.
No, I, I, when I talk to people, I say, this is not a partisan issue at all. It's just, and I, I expect that if it did go to November, that it would, like Francesca said, that it would be in a section that doesn't have any kind of party affiliation.
Yeah, but if someone runs on a party line, they're, you end up.
You can't stop that from happening.
You can't stop it, but you, you, I can tell you.
You can stop, you can't stop it now either. In March either.
We cannot, but blessedly it hasn't happened.
The difference is that in November, you have a whole bunch of Republicans and Democrats on the ballot already, right? So.
On different lines. It's like this.
Right, right. But it's, it's.
You're on the Happy Pleasantville line.
Yes, but if somebody is showing up in November, they know nothing about the local election.
Well, you know, personally, when I, when I don't vote and I don't know someone, I don't know the uh, what the issues are or whatever, I don't vote. I don't vote on that line. I vote for what, for what I know.
Well, and I respect that. So, all right, so here's the, first off, thank you and all three of you obviously are uh, uh, engaged in a way that nobody else is right now. You're alone in a room.
Or there's somebody at home.
Um, and thank you to anyone who's at home. So I, I don't mean to suggest that there aren't legitimate arguments on, on both sides. I know there are. And there isn't any choice in life that doesn't come with a pro and a con. But let's take a little time to, to explore that and see where we land. And ultimately, obviously, it will ultimately be um, a, a matter that we'll get lots of feedback from and ultimately perhaps a referendum on it. But the, the, I, I have really significant concerns and those arise from my direct feedback from communities that have had this experience. So.
Are those administrators who you have the?
Elected official.
Elected officials. So, yeah, but you haven't talked to any voters.
I'm, I, I, I mean, I, I have, I can't.
Yeah, I mean.
No doubt, the average voter says understandably, just like you're in the, like, hey, that'd be easier. Yes, yes. If you explore all the pros and cons, they might or might not think differently. Right, so.
Thank you for.
Thank you. All right. So we will, we'll, we're gonna hatch a, a strategy here for engaging a broader group.
Great.
Maybe we should have some PCTV forums, you know, we'll think that's the right way to go.
Perfect. That would be great. Thank you so much. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, guys.
And good evening.
All right. Um, so uh, let me just make a few other announcements. We probably don't have much of an audience at this point. But first announcement is to make uh, lightning struck and it blew out our elevator's rain. And so the elevator in Village Hall has been out of service since last Thursday afternoon, right?
It was lightning?
Yeah. Um, so our elevator company believes they'll have it up and running by the end of this week. Is that?
Yep.
So the painful reality is to come to the second or more likely the third floor of Village Hall to transact business, the only way in is through the stairs and walking up. Uh, the folks who um, can't do that or would prefer not to, we've got phone numbers. We blasted that out in an e-blast. Feel free to call. If you really need to do something, we can accommodate you by coming down, whatever it might be. But we're, we, we've got the elevator contract, maintenance contract company working on this and hopefully the elevator's up and running again. Um, Eric was trying to be on vacation for a few days. Alyssa tried to recover from the music festival. Lightning strikes and blows out the elevator and then CrowdStrike takes down all the computers here and across the world.
Yeah.
Aside from that, it's been slow sailing.
Good times.
Yeah. All right, so um, I won't go through it, it, the, the discussion we had of Capitol Projects, which we did in the work session and which we're about to send out in a WhatsApp Pleasantville. But I can tell you, uh, uh, we updated folks on what's going on with the Mandel Road pedestrian project. We updated folks on what's going on with the pool, extended conversation, which will have to continue very aggressively very soon. Um, discussed about children sailors, Nana Higgin Brook, all kinds of stuff. If you're interested in detail, it's available, PCDseventy-six dot org. Within a few days, you can watch that whole work session uh, and keep an eye out for our updated email. Block Party Fall Saturday, September twenty-one. You're looking for folks to be sponsors?
Yes, ladies and gentlemen, is interested. Any businesses are interested. Uh, we're looking for some sponsors. Still scheduled for September twenty-first. We also will be putting out the signups for any vendors that are looking to participate. Um, again, the best way to do it is if you are not a member of the chamber and you join the Chamber of Commerce, you will automatically um, not have to pay anything to participate in this event. So that's the best way to go. And we're doing a special promotion that if you join now, it'll cover you for the rest of this year and the following year. So. Um, and if you don't join, there will be a fee of, I think it's at least a hundred dollars to be able to do the block party as a vendor. So it just makes sense just to join if you're not. And we're accepting a couple of businesses, um, even some businesses that are not from Pleasantville. As we've always had in the chamber, um, we have some businesses in Bahala that come in and work with us with our different chambers that we work with. So it is open to all different vendors, obviously. Um, the vendors and the businesses that are on Wheeler in Washington are the ones that usually participate the most. And then with any extra space that we have and someone to participate, that's when we can welcome anyone else. So um, if anyone has any questions, feel free to contact the Chamber Administrator um, through our Chamber website.
Great. Thank you, Paul. If you have anything to add to anything. Okay. Uh, if you mark your calendars way ahead, the lighting ceremony for the tree in Dradle at the holidays is Saturday, uh, December seven. That's been confirmed now. Switching that up from a weeknight to a Saturday night.
Correct. This is the first time we're doing this. We're trying something different. We're going to coordinate an event where we are also trying to, that day, uh, promote local shopping, shop local for the holidays and also coordinate some events throughout the day that lead up to the event that has now been moved up to six P M. In comparison to where it used to be at about seven thirty.
All right. With that, is there any further comment from a member of the public? Raise your hand in the chat if you wanna say something. There being none, first item on our regular agenda is, is there a motion to open a public hearing to consider the village's community development block grant application in support of the Clint Street Senior Center proposed kitchen air conditioning project and acquisition of a new van? Somewhat. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome to the public hearing. Eric, you wanna give the elevator chat?
Sure. So uh, uh, CDBG funds, as they're known, are federal funds administered by Westchester County. Um, a village as affluent as Pleasantville can only or is only eligible for funding if it's tied to uh, our senior population, um, for betterment of the senior population. Uh, so when the CDBG funds become available, we typically look to the Clint Street Senior Center. Um, and that staff has identified two projects, one being the new van and the second uh, being the um, uh, kitchen air conditioning. Uh, so uh, part of the process is holding a public hearing and then uh, formally voting to support the project. So uh, total amount spent on these two items would be about fifty-six thousand dollars.
All right. Any comments on that subject? It's obviously an opportunity that would be wise for us to uh, try to achieve. We don't necessarily get it, but our batting average has been pretty good. We don't necessarily get it, but our batting average has been pretty good, pretty good. Comments of any sort? Comments from the public of any sort? There being none, is there a motion to close the public hearing? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing closed. All right, let me share my screen and we will bounce to our regular agenda items. All right. It's uh two fifty-three, Paul.
Whereas the Board of Trustees held an close a public hearing concerning the village Pleasantville application for community development block grant, C D B G, funding for the replacement of the Clinton Street Senior Kitchen Center, Clinton Street Senior Center Kitchen Air Conditioning Project and the acquisition of a new van on July twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four. Now therefore, be resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to submit an application for the CBBG funding to the Westchester County uh for the replacement of the Clinton Street Senior Center Kitchen Air Conditioning Project and the acquisition of a new van for a total estimated project expense of fifty-six thousand.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved two fifty-four, Nicole.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following budget amendments for fiscal year ending twenty twenty-five as listed below. Budget transfers of the capital fund, uh three hundred and three uh three hundred and three hundred and ninety-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents from sidewalk and curving to uh for fiscal year twenty twenty-four to fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Ninety-eight thousand three hundred dollars and seventy-nine cents from street paving for fiscal year twenty twenty-four to street paving for fiscal year twenty twenty-five.
Is there a second?
Second.
So this is rolling money out of the capital fund from the fiscal year that just ended to the fiscal year we're now.
Yeah, but it's staying in the capital account, just right, uh rolling over to the.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved two fifty-five, Yangi.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the abstract for payment of claims dated July twenty-second, twenty twenty-four for fiscal year end twenty twenty-four and check number is one 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 six zero nine one 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 six one four. The general fund of twenty-two thousand five hundred ninety dollars and four cents. The water fund, two thousand seven hundred seventy-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. Refuse fund, nine hundred twenty-five dollars totaling twenty-six thousand two hundred ninety-three dollars and seventy-nine cents. Payment of claims.
Is there a, is there a second?
Say it.
A delightfully small number, but only small because it's cleaning up things that ascribed to the previous fiscal year. That's correct. All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve all two fifty-six. Now you got the real one.
It is. Resolve the Board of Trustees hereby approves the abstract for payment of claims dated July twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four for the fiscal year of two thousand twenty-five and check numbers one 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 six oh seven through one 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 six oh eight and one 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 six one five through one 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 seven oh nine. General fund, three hundred and fifty-five thousand, one hundred ninety-four and seventy-three cents. Water fund, twenty-eight thousand five hundred forty-nine eighty-two cents. Capital fund, thirty thousand two hundred thirty-four and fifty cents. Refuse fund, sixteen thousand sixty-eight and ninety-five cents for a total of four hundred thirty thousand forty-eight dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved two fifty-seven, Nicole.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby accepts the resignation of Luke Bryan Recreation Assistant Panther Club effective June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved two fifty-eight, Yangi.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby accept the resignation of Daisy Haywood Recreation Assistant Panther Club effective June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. FYI, if you're interested in working for Panther Club, reach out to the rec department. Two fifty-nine, Paul.
Resolve the Board of Trustees hereby approves the minutes of regular meeting held on June twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four and July eighth, two thousand twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Minutes are attached. Uh folks who are interested in the question of uh whether we should or should not move the elections from March to November, might be interested in the account in the minutes, but perhaps even more so the account in the video of the meeting of seven, eight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Two sixty, Gregor.
Resolve that the Village Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign the fee-exempt application for the Clinton Street Centers renewal of a food service establishment permit with Westchester County Department of Health for the period of October first, twenty twenty-four to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Is there a second?
Say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved two sixty-one, Yangi.
Ah, this is a doozy one. Here we go. Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following revised stipends for service in support of twenty twenty-four Pleasantville Music Festival. Bruce Figler, co-executive director, five thousand nine hundred, nine hundred and eighty dollars. Doug Panero, co-executive director, five thousand dollars. Pam Condren, hospitality, artist relations, party stage curator, for a hundred and eighty-four dollars. Andy Sullivan, sponsorship, marketing, vendor sponsor, load-in, fifteen hundred dollars. Carolyn Bee Hill, volunteer coordinator, a thousand dollars. Abby Wright, public relations, five hundred dollars. Mar- Marie Graham, vendor coordinator, a thousand dollars. Stuart Vance Designs, design director, fifteen hundred dollars. Jeffrey Schre- Schreider, stage crew director, five hundred eighty-seven dollars. Linda Schenkman, photography leader, three hundred dollars. Vanessa Perkins, security, Vanessa and Michael Kranzky, security, hundred fifty, security, hundred fifty. Justin Edelson, webmaster, tech services, a thousand dollars. Brid- Bridget Egan, zero waste, a hundred fifty dollars. Edwin Kuo, zero waste, a hundred fifty dollars. Helen Mirror, zero waste, a hundred fifty dollars. Karen Horowitz, zero waste, a hundred fifty dollars. Sophie Worley, stage, a hundred fifty dollars. Glenn Quadvile, Quadvile, stage, a hundred fifty. Dave Harmon, field logistics, a hundred fifty dollars. Sue Harmon, social media, a hundred fifty dollars. Jim Peyton, stage, a hundred fifty dollars. Pete Rogovan, tent city coordinator, a hundred fifty dollars. Dennis Peters, face painting coordinator, three hundred eighty-two dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
So if you're uh looking for a gig that would earn you about a dollar an hour, here they are.
Face painting seems better.
Yes, a minor editorial. Uh uh typographic piece for the last piece. It says face painting coordinator.
Painting.
We should change that to painting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved, all two sixty-two.
Resolve the Board of Trustees, based upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Public Works, hereby appoints Dante Morella, effective on July twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four, to the job title auto mechanic. Job title code four eighty-one, C S E A, wage schedule be step five, a salary of eighty-two thousand five hundred sixty-eight. Set up plan is subject to provisional period of not less than twelve weeks to a maximum of fifty-two weeks.
Is there a second?
Second.
Can I just ask?
Yeah, Yangi, did you have a question?
Um, this is someone, I guess, we've always had this position, just out of curiosity.
So we've had our uh our retirement, our assistant mechanic um was I wouldn't say promoted, it was more of a lateral step into our highway division. So it opened up the assistant mechanic position. So uh we're not, it's not increasing the headcount, it's backfilling position that was ultimately due to our retire.
Okay.
So no change in the overall, it's a budget number. So correct. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved, two sixty-three. Step?
Me.
Nicole, yes.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the resignation of Stuart Hansen Court Attendant effective February fourth, twenty twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Catching up with the paperwork to close out employees. Uh two sixty-four, maybe?
Yeah, resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes recreation superintendent to hold the annual ragamuffin parade on Bedford Road and festival in Memorial Plaza on Sunday, October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four at twelve thirty P M. And therefore, close Academy Street at eleven thirty A M to twelve forty-five P M and close Bedford Road at twelve thirty P M. And further resolve the Board of Trustees authorizes the police chief to post no parking signs on the Memorial Pla- Plaza parking lot in advance of the event and to tow all vehicles in violation of this temporary parking re- restriction.
Is there a second?
Second.
I must add, this event to my listing of coming up events. Um uh the advantage of Sunday is that it avoids conflict with the farm market and both events uh occur without conflict one to the other. Uh all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved, two sixty-five, Paul.
Resolve the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes recreation superintendent to hold the annual holiday lighting ceremony at the intersection of Gray Oak Lane and Mandel Road on Saturday, December seventh, two thousand twenty-four at seven P M. But there was a six. I think that.
Don't change, right? We can change that to six.
Okay. So then we would have to probably close the roads a little earlier, right?
So so what time is it dark?
It gets dark by that time.
Okay.
It's dark already by like six.
Yeah, six is better, I think. Unless there's some other reason that would be a problem.
Okay, so we just, I think probably move off. So as, so I'll I'll read it again and then we'll make the changes.
Yes.
Saturday, December what?
Seven.
That is not a Saturday. Am I wrong? Oh, I'm sorry. Alright, I'm tired. Sorry.
Yes.
Alright, so I'll say six and then with the closing probably an hour earlier, so like five thirty.
Yep.
And to seven thirty?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Does it come up on this? Does it change?
Alright. It'll it'll be, yeah, and I'll be reflected in the minutes, you know.
Okay. Alright, uh resolve the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes recreation superintendent to hold the annual holiday lighting ceremony at the intersection of Gray Oak Lane and Mandel Road on Saturday, December seventh, two thousand twenty-four at six P M. And therefore, close Edgewood Avenue between Gray Oak Lane and Wilton Road five thirty P M to seven thirty P M and Mandel Road between Gray Oak Lane and Brookfield Place between five thirty P M and seven thirty P M. And post no parking signs on Gray Oak Lane and Brookfield Place. And for their result, the Board of Trustees authorize the police chief to post no parking signs in advance of the event and to tow all vehicles in violation of this temporary parking restriction.
Is there a second?
Okay.
So I will say it is conceivable that there at the holiday season, this would get in the way of somebody's holiday party in their home, right?
Pretty early.
It's still early, but it.
It gets dark at five thirty, by the way, guys. I just looked it up.
Alright, thank you.
So I think I think that the the game plan is so that it has it. For example, I'm gonna buy a holiday party. So my kind of thinking is having people come even earlier and then just walk down.
Okay, alright, well, whatever is over, we should just message that out to the effect.
Yeah, we'll put that out there, I think, in social media and everything and.
Yeah, good idea.
Alright, uh did we vote all in favor?
Not yet, I don't think.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Last one, Nicole, two sixty-six.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign a special event permit application from the New York State Liquor Authority for the Pleasantville Chamber of Commerce Community Block Party.
Is there a second?
Say it.
That's the same routine we followed in last year. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. That is the last of our uh regular resolutions. Is there any comment from the public or anyone who's watching online? Uh there being none, uh is there a motion to go into executive session to discuss contractual and personnel matters?
So move.
Second?
Say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Thank you all for watching. Again, uh the tape of this and previous meetings can be found at PCTV seventy-six dot org. Uh our next regular meeting is three weeks from today. That is Monday, August twelfth. Uh we will see you then. Thank you for your attention. We'll sign off from Zoom and go into executive session.